Okay, it is, good evening. It is Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 meeting.
Recording in progress.
Council. Can we get a roll call here?
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have an exciting event next, which is to get sworn in the newest member of the city council, Josh Cooperman. And we're delighted that you're here. It looks like you've got your family with you and everything. That's great. And we have our municipal judge thrower, who's here to administer the oath. Maybe I'll just leave it to the judge take over from here.
Don't be afraid to read it. All right, you ready?
Yep.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. "I, Josh Cooperman..."
"I, Josh Cooperman..."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America..."
"...the Constitution of the State of Colorado..."
"...the Constitution of the State of Colorado..."
"...the ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado..."
"...the ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado..."
"...and faithfully perform the duties..."
"...and faithfully perform the duties..."
"...of the office of City Council, Ward One..."
"...of the office of City Council, Ward One..."
"...upon which I am about to enter."
"...upon which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We got a place up here for you, Josh. And I think, good. We have your nameplate all ready to go. Welcome. All right, the next, one of the funny things that happened when I first got elected was that somebody called to congratulate me on winning the election and then, and then immediately said, "Now get to work." You know, it was just kind of that thank you, but on to the, the matter of at hand. First thing we have is an executive session. So, the item on which we're going to have the executive session is pending litigation, Louisville Charter, Section 5-2D, consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation, and CRS, Section 24-6-4024B, for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of legal advice on specific legal questions concerning pending litigation. The city attorney is requesting the city council convene an executive session for the purposes of consultation with respect to that pending litigation. And I'll ask the city attorney to introduce any further agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, I'm requesting an executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 5-2D of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS, Section 2464024B. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinance may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires that the information being discussed remain confidential, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2D authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024B of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves discussion of potential litigation involving the Rocky Mountain Municipal Airport. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, and that the executive session also include interim city manager, Samma Fox, city attorney Kathleen Kelly, and special counsel to the city, Michaela Rivera.
Second.
Okay, can we, do we have any comment? Okay, take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
We are back on the record after an executive session. City Attorney, take it from here.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and Council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, and the City Council had such discussion. In follow-up, I request Council designate two Council members to work with legal counsel to gather information and data to continue to evaluate potential claims.
Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and do that? I guess the question is, what two would like to volunteer? Judy and Dietrich. Okay? So, I don't know that we need a motion to accomplish that or not.
Yes, a motion.
Okay. So, based on your description, so moved and to designate Dietrich Hefner and Judy Kern to be on the task force that we're creating. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the agenda, but I'd like to just make a comment. At 6:55, I have to leave for about a half an hour, and I don't know where we'll be in this agenda, so I'm not going to try to move anything or change anything, but my daughter performs twice a year, and it's only on Tuesday nights, and I love you all, but I love her more. So, I'm going to go watch her for about a half an hour and then race back. But otherwise, I would like to move that we approve the agenda as provided.
Second.
So, motion to approve the agenda, switching C and D.
No.
Or no?
I don't think we need to switch anything.
You don't want to do, okay, I'm sorry. Thought, all right.
No, thanks.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do Council members have any, excuse me, go back here. Yeah. Public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. This is a time in the meeting we have for people to make public comments on items that we haven't set for the agenda tonight and items that are on the consent agenda. And there are just several rules that we follow here, which is, everybody who would like to speak, we have, want you to sign off on a card right outside in the hallway with your name and some other information and provide it to the clerk. If you haven't already done that and want to speak, please do. You have three minutes to speak. You don't need to take all three minutes, you can if you want. If you want to pool your time with one other person or more, you can do that, as long as you just let us know that you're doing that, and perhaps a raising of a hand of the person you're pooling your time with, you can speak up to six minutes. And in that case, again, you don't have to do the full six minutes if you don't want to. All opinions are welcome, and I'd ask that everybody be respectful of each speaker, and we discourage clapping and booing and all, because it is a chance for people to speak, and sometimes they get very nervous when they go up to the dais, and we want to encourage everybody, and they get kind of, sometimes you can get a little flustered if there are people taking count and commenting on what's being said. So, with that, we'll take public comment.
First up is Don Parcher, followed by Jeff Kagan.
Good evening. Don Parcher, 378 Grass Court. Three things. One, congratulations to Josh Cooperman on his election to the Council. We look forward to having you on the Council for your passion for the welfare of residents, for your love of the city, your hard work, and your dedication to climate action, which I think is more important than ever now, based after the national election, that we act locally. We have people locally who believe it's not a hoax, so thank you for your action to date and in the future. Also, please preserve the prairie dog habitat at Redtail Ridge for the bald eagles. And finally, let you know, I'm still working on my Neighbor's Connect program, which, again, I think is more important than ever with, based after the national election, that we connect. The idea is to make sure that all residents are connected to at least two of their neighbors, ideally by telephone, for all the benefits, so, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Next up is Jeff Kagan, followed by Katie Dickinson.
We have two of us, could we pool that are two names in there as a mayor?
Who's the other one?
Jeff and Michael. Or should we wait to pool later, whatever's best, but we're on the same topic.
Was Michael's last name?
I don't think it was written on there, it's a...
It just said Mike?
Yes, that could be. Should we pool, is that all right? Okay, I will lead off. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Michael Kirkland, or Commish, as most people call me. I run Six Pack Sports, and I've been running it for 16 years, including our broom ball league, which we've done at the rink down the street for the last 10 years. Stand up if you're part of the Six Pack broom ball community.
Oh, wow.
We have a very large and very proud community, we have 200 players... We have a very large and very proud community. We have 200 players that play in the broom ball league every year on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday nights. Last decade, and it's a blast. We had great time. We love the camaraderie. We love the sport. We love hanging out together. We go afterwards to the local establishments like Henry's, the Pico's, the Clark's, get it by team, and get a beer with our teams we just played against. The camaraderie is incredible, and the respect we have for each other, for the rink, for the community, is really, really wonderful, and it's such a tremendous win. I also want to state that I think it's a tremendous win for the city of Louisville. Like I said, we have 200 players that come to the city on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday nights, the slowest nights of the week and the slowest time of the year. In December, January, February, when it's five degrees, we're still out here because life's too short to... I don't know if you can hear that. Life's too short to cancel fun. We're always a go. And so, we come out, and they frankly wouldn't go to Henry's afterwards on a Tuesday night when it's five degrees if it weren't for Six Pack Broom Ball. I think the city benefits a tremendous amount from the local businesses having us come to the city, and I think it's a cool thing. It's a really awesome thing of civic pride that you have a broom ball league down the street. Really, really awesome. So, you might be saying, okay, that's wonderful. Why are you here talking to us? Sounds like a great thing. Huge bummer situation in that we have a third-party vendor that is terminating this wonderful relationship. The previous rink management companies were absolutely fabulous. We had great relationships with them. A new rink manager came aboard last year, and he was far less than fabulous. We have a number of concerns with him last year. I sent a letter, and I have a copy for everyone, and I could leave it. I don't know, submitting letters is permissible, but I can leave it for everyone, a copy for everyone. This is a letter I wrote February 21st to the city staff members that hired the rink manager about our concerns with him, in terms of all the ways that he was unprofessional and all the ways he treated us unfairly. And then I was really hoping we could have a new rink manager for the next season for several reasons, as stated in here. I was told that the feedback was received. However, I do not believe it was considered, because coming into this year, after following up several times, I finally heard back, yes, there's a rink manager's back again, and yes, it's the same one as last year, which is a major bummer. And he refuses to talk to me and to negotiate for our, this year's contract, so we're not coming back, because he claims he found a beer can at the end of last season that he thinks was from us, and it could have been from anyone, frankly. And we have such a respectful crowd. We've been treating very, very, very unfairly, and I'm very upset about it, and our players are upset about it. And because of this third-party vendor, it's not the city of Louisville, and it's not Six Pack Sports, he's going to terminate this relationship, and I don't think that's right. The city of Louisville's going to lose. Our players are going to lose. Frankly, I think the city of Louisville deserves better. I think Six Pack Sports deserves better, and I think together, we're such a tremendous win-win. So, I please implore you to reconsider the rink manager and how we can work together to bring Six Pack Sports back, because right now, the 200 of us are going to go to another city to play broom ball, and frankly, we don't want to, because we love Louisville.
That's my time. I want to yield to my colleague, Jeff.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff, one more voice in support here of broom ball in downtown Louisville. I'm a 15-year veteran of this beautiful league. A lot of them here as well. 10 of those years have been right here in downtown Louisville. And furthermore, I've spent the last 21 years creating family-friendly community programs here in Boulder County as one half of a children's musical duo known as Jeff and Paige. We've partnered with a number of city departments and Louisville organizations, so I can say with complete conviction that broom ball in partnership with the city of Louisville is a huge community win-win. We bring 200 people here. Every week in the dead of winter, we bring our families and our dollars to Louisville establishments at their very slowest times of year. We utilize this beautiful community asset that you have, your rink, at off-peak hours. And on a personal note, broom ball in Louisville is the absolute highlight of my winter. I'm outdoors with my friends. I'm moving my body. I'm making connections with new people, and that is about to disappear because of an unfounded grievance with the current rink manager. So, I'll conclude with two thoughts. Number one, I would very respectfully submit that a third-party contractor should never be in possession, sole possession, of a decision of whether or not to dissolve a community partnership with multiple beneficiaries. And number two, yes, it does appear like we're going to have to find a new home this season, but maybe, maybe somebody up here on this council, or multiple people on this council, are hearing what we have to say, are seeing this mass of nodding heads, and there's another 180 of us waiting to hear how this all pans out. And you're thinking, you know what? I do want this here in the city of Louisville. I do want 200 people to bring their families and their dollars to our businesses at their very slowest times of year. I do want our ice rink utilized in a very unique way at a time when it would literally be in the dark otherwise if not for our league. No, we don't want our third-party contractors dissolving decade-long partnerships with multiple beneficiaries. And yes, we do want the city of Louisville to remain the outdoor wintertime hub of joy and fun and exercise and community. If so, we need to hear from you ASAP. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Juan.
Can I just add really quickly? I also work full-time for Big Brothers Big Sisters, and we're always looking for ice rinks to bring my kids to, and I would never bring it to the current rink manager. Absolutely not. Side note. Unrelated to Six Pack Sports. Thank you.
Next up is Katie Dickinson, followed by Dana Bove.
Hi, everyone. So, members of City Council and fellow community members, like many of you, I've been doing a lot of thinking about our democracy over the past two weeks. After spending some time feeling really sad, I've started to contemplate what comes next. How can I move forward and be a part of healing what are clearly some really big divides in our country and rebuilding what's broken in our democracy? Reading and listening to smart people who have been paying attention to the warning signs and fissures in our democracy for years has been really helpful. One principle that's come up a lot is that we need to start small, and I loved hearing about the Neighbors Program. Adrienne Marie Brown uses the concept of fractals, so small structures that build up to bigger ones. In thinking about how to build a strong democracy for our country, she asks us to examine how we're practicing democracy in our everyday lives, in our family units, with our neighbors, at work, and in our local communities. So, I've taken this Go Local advice to heart, and I've walked down to my local city hall to talk to my family member and my community about democracy. My question and challenge for all of us is, how are we practicing democracy, and how can we do it more and do it better? So, in my mind, at the heart of practicing democracy is recognizing and respecting and respecting the right of every person to participate and be heard. It means agreeing to live in community together, to make decisions together, to treat each other, to trust each other. It means assuming and trusting that our fellow participants have fundamentally good intentions and that we're willing to listen to each other, to deliberate, to debate, and seek common ground. It means agreeing to continue being in community with one another, even and especially when we disagree. Members of Council and city staff, I'm here to thank you for being part of our democracy and doing the hard and loving work of working together and with your constituents to make decisions that affect us all. From my front row seat, I know how much you care, and I know that you approach this work with good intentions. If any of you are in it for fame and glory and riches, you're doing it wrong. My ask for all of you is to model democracy for us, to treat each other with kindness, to disagree heartily, and go out for a beer at Henry's afterwards. I ask you to come with different perspectives and strategies, and also encourage you to continue to find ways to bring us, your community members, in to this work you do, to help us get to know you and build trust in you and with each other. For members of my community, my challenge and ask for you is to join me in thinking about how we can continue practicing democracy together. Again, I love the Neighbors Program. How can we connect more, be kinder to each other, accept disagreement and difference as part of living in a thriving democracy and society, and trust each other's good intentions? How can we disagree without thinking the people we're disagreeing with are enemies? If we can't do this here in Louisville, where we have so much in common and so much shared purpose, our prospects for saving our democracy at the national scale don't look good. I think we can, and I'm committed to continuing this work with anyone who will join me. So, thank you.
Next up is Dana Bove, followed by Suzanne Summers.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Dana Bovey, and I reside in Boulder, Colorado. I am here to represent myself and members of our 501(c)(3) research organization, Front Range Eagle Studies, a group based locally, and many of our members live in Louisville and the surrounding area. I'm here alongside other concerned citizens to advocate for the protection of the Sterns' bald eagles and their critical habitat at Redtail Ridge. This issue has resonated not only in Louisville, but across the Front Range, with hundreds of residents signing a petition urging action. Despite repeated outreach from our group, Front Range Eagle Studies, and the community, the Council has failed to meaningfully engage with these concerns. Over the course of months, our emails, reports, and invitations for dialogue have gone largely unacknowledged. Of the numerous communications we've sent, including detailed scientific studies, a community petition signed now by 515 people, and personal invitations to presentations, the Council's responses have been minimal at best. This lack of engagement undermines public trust and ignores the community's clear interest in protecting these eagles and their habitat. We're here today to respectfully request that this Council take meaningful steps to protect these federally protected eagles and their habitat in the land that the city of Louisville will soon own. As you will hear from many of my colleagues and others here from the community, this is about far more than a single species. It's about respecting the values of this community and ensuring responsible stewardship of our open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Suzanne Summers, followed by Anna Rivas.
Hi, Susan Summers, 1418 Galilee Lane. I wanted to emphasize the critical importance of the Redtail Ridge prairie dog colonies, specifically the 50 to 70 acres that are now located on soon-to-be city of Louisville land. These colonies are an essential food source for the Sterns' bald eagles. These colonies, along with key hunting purchase at Monarch High School, are vital for the survival of these eagles. We are already struggling, who are already struggling, being repeatedly displaced by development and unrestricted trail access at the Holmberg Preserve. Research by the Front Range Nesting Bald Eagle Studies, backed by thousands of hours of data, clearly demonstrates the eagle's dependence on the prey habitat that this city will soon own. Yet, the city of Louisville plans to eradicate these prairie dogs without acknowledging the consequences for wildlife or addressing the concerns raised by hundreds of residents. We ask the Council to stop these actions and prioritize habitat conservation as part of its open space management plan. For example, the city of Longmont restricts the eradication of prairie dog colonies with over 100 individuals on city-owned land within a one-mile radius of eagle nests. Unlike Louisville, Longmont demonstrates its respect for wildlife and this incredible species through such policies, as well as compliance with the federal law that protects them. Please understand, the Sterns' bald eagles' primary hunting perches are just 300 meters from these prairie dog colonies, and their active nest is only half a mile away. So, please consider, do not exterminate these prairie dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Anna Rivas, followed by Chelsea Lees.
Good evening. My name's Anna Rivas, and I currently reside in Longmont, 4501 Nelson Road. I've been a Colorado resident since 1994, and I'm a longtime advocate for wildlife in our state. While the city staff have dismissed our petition by noting that not all signatories live in Louisville, this issue extends far beyond the city limits. The Sterns' eagles are federally protected, and their preservation is a matter of national significance. Federally protected species like bald eagles are of concern to all U.S. citizens, and the number of Louisville residents signing the petition is irrelevant in this broader context. This petition represents a unified call for Louisville to lead in conservation efforts. This Council has a responsibility to listen to these voices and act on behalf of both local residents and the broader community that cherishes these eagles and their habitat and all the other species who occupy or rely on that habitat. I want to highlight the broader ecological stakes at play. The prairie dog colonies at Redtail Ridge are a keystone species, supporting not just the eagles, but many other predators and wildlife. Their removal would have a cascading effect on the ecosystem, jeopardizing biodiversity and ecological balance. Biodiversity loss on a local level is feeding the biodiversity loss on a global scale, and this is directly tied to a much bigger picture. We are currently in the midst of the sixth mass extinction, which is being driven by humans, and habitat loss is the biggest contributing factor. Here's another extraordinarily sad statistic. There's been a catastrophic 73% decline in the average size of the global wildlife populations in just 50 years. And here's another one. A recent scientific study of Earth's mammals, mammal biomass, determined that humans comprise 36% of the mammals on the planet. Livestock and domestic animals are 60%. Wild animals account, or wild mammals, account for just 4% of that biomass. So, this is yet another reason we should be paying attention to preserving what we have left. This is not just about development. It's about ensuring that the city of Louisville's open space and parks policies align with the values of conservation and sustainability that many of us who live in this beautiful state hold dear. The Council has an opportunity to set a precedent at this critical time to be a model of responsible growth that respects both wildlife and community concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Chelsea Lees, followed by Al Backland.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Lees, 314 Stickney Avenue. I'd like to address the importance of public engagement and transparency in this process. Despite numerous emails, reports, and invitations to engage in dialogue, this Council has largely ignored our concerns. For example, our group submitted a detailed study on the Sterns' eagles' habitat usage at Redtail Ridge, but it was buried in the final pages of a 750-page development report. This lack of engagement undermines public trust and fails to reflect the values of a small-town government that prides itself on community involvement. We ask this Council to acknowledge these concerns and commit to a meaningful dialogue moving forward. Additionally, I want to underscore the legal and ethical obligations at stake. The Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act explicitly prohibits actions that molest or disturb eagles, including the destruction of critical food sources like the prairie dog colonies at Redtail Ridge. By allowing these colonies to be eradicated, the city risks violating federal law and setting a dangerous precedent for wildlife management. We urge the Council to reconsider its plans and prioritize conservation measures that align with both federal protections and community values. As a Colorado native, scientist, and ecologist, I've spent two years observing the Sterns' eagles and engaging with the visitors at the Holmberg Preserve. I can attest to the significant role these birds and other wildlife play in the lives of residents. My professional experience in biotech and public health, I have witnessed high company turnover, poor facility management and maintenance, leaving spaces in disrepair. This project raises serious questions about why we prioritize new development over investing in the proper care, maintenance, and reuse of existing infrastructure. Encouraging development at the expense of open land exacerbates habitat loss and overlooks our responsibility to maintain and utilize facilities that already exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Al Backland, followed by Holly.
Well, good evening. I don't do this often. This is kind of fun. All right? My name is Al Backland, and I live in 2332 Rimrock Circle in Lafayette. So, I'm here to talk about the use of the property that has come up and with regards to the eagles. I've been involved as a volunteer in this organization for five years now, which means that, you know, one day a week, I go out and monitor eagles and eagles' nests and record what's going on. Dana and Holly collect that information, and they've, I know, provided a lot of detailed reports to you. All right. As a longtime resident of the Front Range, I've seen firsthand how development can displace wildlife and erode the natural heritage. wildlife and erode the natural heritage that defines our region. The Sterns' eagles are not just a local treasure, they are a symbol of resilience and really, I think maybe some of you have seen the video of the lightning bolt that hit their nest, which relocated them, obviously. And so they've gone through a lot of stuff. I worked at Storage Tech for 22 years, starting in 1974, so I know the property, I'm familiar with the property, and I have a good understanding of the property in question. We occasionally would walk around the Storage Tech property and on occasion take a lunch in the area down by the little pond that we called Lake Awida. There was always a flock of ducks that utilized the pond, and Jesse protected them, including terminating an employee who hit one of the ducks on the driveway coming in. I saw it happen, I found out later that employee was terminated, so he took care of the ducks in that area. The opportunity to protect and promote the well-being of a pair of eagles is wonderful and considerably more significant than a flock of ducks. By preserving this habitat and food resources, you have an opportunity to demonstrate leadership and balance in growth with conservation. This is not just about the eagles, it's representative of values that make Lewisville a great place to live. You know, my comments are not based on the legalities, you've heard that, there are a lot of things that cover that. I really enjoyed being able to see eagles again in the Front Range, seeing eagles, period. You know, I started in 1974. I used to go across the street and shoot skeet at the skeet range and trap range, so I've seen the development as it's taken place. And here's, I think, an opportunity to preserve a chunk of that property that I've been around and familiar with, and preserve it for these eagles. I think you probably have seen the pictures also of the eagles roosting, I understand, my time's up, roosting on the light poles over here at the school, so they're in the area.
Thanks, Al.
Holly, followed by Jamie Ferrani.
Good evening, council members. My name is Holly Anderson, and I'm a Lafayette resident. I'd like to draw attention to the growing community support for this issue. Our petition has garnered over 430 signatures, reflecting widespread concern for the Sterns' eagles and their habitat. This council has an opportunity to listen to these voices and take meaningful action. By preserving the prairie dog colonies at Redtail Ridge and supporting habitat conservation, you can demonstrate that Lewisville values its natural heritage and is committed to responsible stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
I apologize. Jaime, correct? Sorry.
No, you had it right with Jamie the first time.
Oh, I did, okay.
It was the last name, Freina, but, close.
Okay. And after that is Donna Bushing.
All right. Do I have two minutes, or did the timer reset? Thank you. Cool. Well, hello, council members. My name is Jamie Freina. I live at 766 South Martin in Longmont. I'd like to emphasize the importance of collaboration and dialogue. This group has repeatedly reached out to the council, offering detailed research, invitation to presentations, opportunities for discussion, yet those efforts have been met with silence or deflection. We hope that tonight marks a turning point. By engaging with us and considering these recommendations, the council can show that it values community input and its commitment to finding solutions that work for both wildlife and the residents. Recently in Longmont, over 800 people signed a petition to stop a prairie dog extermination at their local park, I was included. They love seeing the prairie dogs along what they would call Squeaker Alley, which is now silent and lifeless. The people that will use your new open space will love seeing the wildlife there. Please don't take that away. I want to say on a personal note that it breaks my heart that we even have to debate this. A huge amount of prairie dogs are already going to be massacred for the development. Protecting the ones in this 130 acres is the least you could do. Please keep your open spaces as beautiful ecosystems, don't turn them into lifeless graveyards. Engage in meaningful dialogue with our group and community today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Bushing, followed by Tamara Krantz.
Hello, I'm Donna Bushing. I live at 186 Horizon Avenue in Erie. I volunteer for the Front Range Bald Eagles Nesting Study, and I also volunteer at Stanstone Ranch in Longmont, where I help lead field trips for the St. Vrain second graders. And at this site, they get to see prairie dog colonies all the time, and sometimes they get to see the bald eagles. And the children are very excited when they actually see a bald eagle or a hawk that is using the colonies. As you've heard tonight, the stakes are high, not just for the Sterns' eagles, but for the values that defined our community. This is an opportunity for the city of Lewisville to lead by example, demonstrating that growth and conservation can coexist. We respectfully request that the council take immediate steps to preserve the prairie dog colonies at Redtail Ridge and protect the Sterns' eagle habitat. And we ask you to engage in serious dialogue with our group and your community. Together, we can ensure a future that honors both our natural heritage and our shared values. Thank you.
Tamara Krantz, followed by Cindy Bedell.
Hey, thanks. I'm Tamara Krantz, and I live in Lewisville. And first, I want to say congratulations to Josh Cooperman, our new city council member. It's nice to see a new face up here, and thanks for taking my comment. I appreciate what all of you do. I also saw that video. It sounds like I saw some of you nodding your head that you saw the video of that eagle nest just exploding when it was hit by the lightning strike and the female eagle hanging upside down for her life. And those eagles mean a lot to me because I'm a volunteer with Boulder County Parks and Open Space, and I served as an eagle ambassador out there. And I don't know, you guys have all probably been out at Sterns' Lake and you've seen the signs that say "Keep Moving: Bald Eagle Habitat" from when the nest used to be there. People would walk by and they'd be like, "Oh, I thought 'Keep Moving' was a motivational thing for me to keep going." But no, it's like "Keep Moving" because we don't want to disturb the nest, but come on over here and take a look at the eagles. People who didn't notice them love them. I've been watching them for years. They're so important to me, and I am sad that they had to leave. And I guess you guys all understand that why this is an issue now is because they've moved closer to the Redtail Ridge site, and that's why everybody's just bringing this up right now. I've seen them roost, hanging out at Monarch, I've got two kids there, and they tell me, "Mom, I saw the eagles," when they do see them. And I'm hoping that it would be possible for the public land dedication to become, or at least until we figure out what's happening with the eagles, to remain as a prairie dog colony and not to be graded over. And, you know, I think there is a kind of a communication problem because, like, every couple weeks, I email Rob, and I'm like, "Well, what's going on with the development?" Because we passed the plat, but I don't even know if the subdivision plat has been recorded yet, you know, because it was conditional. So I'm not sure where it is in the process, the public isn't necessarily sure what's going on. So I email Rob, "What's going on with it?" But like, last I heard, they still haven't recorded the plat. And Cameron Fowles is very, you know, our Public Works Department is very helpful to me. I'm like, "Did they do the grading permit yet?" Because like, I think my worst fear is that I'm going to wake up one morning and my kids are going to say, "Hey, Mom, I just saw the bulldozers out there grading over everything." And when they do this, they have to do it carefully, because that pond, as somebody else mentioned, is an ecosystem. I mean, and if they're going to change that pond and changing all the drainage, if they're going to bulldoze over where the prairie dogs are, it's not going to work for our ecology. So I think that we need to figure out when this is going to, we don't know when it's going to happen, we don't know if there's going to be a meeting about it and how to get involved. So just direct us, how can we meet with staff? How can we be involved, and how can we make sure that our voices are heard? I'm not speaking for Front Range Bald Eagle Studies, I'm just speaking as a member of the public, but I really appreciate what they did. But how can we be involved and know, when is the grading going to happen, and how can we be sure that it's not going to destroy the habitat in the process? Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara.
Cindy Bedell, followed by Linda Bassey.
Hi, Cindy Bedell. I live in Ward 2, Lewisville. This is a poem to give a voice to those who have no voice, who are at the mercy of humans who keep taking and taking. From a prairie dog at Redtail Ridge, one, for Campus Drive. For you, your cars and exhaust, I offer my beating heart, stilled under your tires, my soft, tawny fur stirring in the breeze along your new road. I give you my life, so you can get somewhere a few minutes faster. Two, for a soccer field. For your children, I let go of mine. We huddle together in the deepest, darkest earth. Tunnels we dug to live together, call to one another, warn of flying or four-footed threats. But this, the gas, the bulldozers, we cannot warn, we cannot escape. So we huddle together, last breaths mingling then gone. Your children will have their soccer fields, their playgrounds. They will call to each other above us, as our bodies crumble into bone and dirt and flat skin underneath them, unseen. But remember us, as you play, as you sit in the sun, we gave it all to you. So I wrote these poems to encourage you to preserve more wildlife habitat and natural features at Redtail Ridge. It's not too late. And in fact, I know some folks might not agree with me on my last point, but, you know, we could offer to buy some more open space and some more parkland in a collaborative agreement with Boulder County or GOCO or something like that. And personally, I would be happy to volunteer for a project like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Next up is Linda Bassey, followed by Dad's Phone.
I think I was just told to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. My name is Linda Bassey. I live at 2201 Cliff Rose Lane in Lewisville, and I am here to comment. I won't repeat things, but I do support all the comments that were made about the importance of protecting prairie dog habitat on the land that will be ceded for public space at the Redtail Ridge development and on lands, open space lands adjacent to the development. It's vitally important that these eagles and other creatures have access to the whole food chain, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Linda.
Next up is Dad's Phone, followed by Alana Clavner.
I can only presume that's me as Dad's Phone, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
My deepest apologies. This is actually George Colbert, or Colbert, however you want to pronounce it, live on Catalpa Court in Ward 2. Sorry, my name came over as Dad's Phone. I just wanted to congratulate Josh Cooperman for winning this current election for the seat in Ward 1. I noticed there is not a large group of his opponent's supporters filibustering this meeting tonight, unlike tonight, when this council voted 6 to 0 against Josh Cooperman joining this council. I think tonight is the perfect night for Josh Cooperman to lead by example, to show the council, the citizens, and his constituents how to lead with humility. And the best way he can do that is by making his first course of action on this council to be an outright apology to Kim and Tim Beerman for Josh's and his supporters' treatment of Tim during Tim's swearing-in. We'll be waiting patiently for that.
Thank you, George.
Next up is Elena Clavner, followed by Michelle.
Thank you. My name is Elena Klaver. I live in Nywha on 7712 Nywha Road. I've lived here for almost 50 years. We are all uninvited guests of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, and Ute Nations, and we all owe a debt to the original peoples as well as to future generations. I am a federally certified Spanish interpreter and bird watcher. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sterns' Lake eagles and any other eagles and other birds of prey who live in the Lewisville area where I often birdwatch. Increased habitat destruction, euphemistically called "development," and destruction of prairie dog habitat are negatively affecting bald eagles and other birds of prey. We just lost a prairie dog habitat area near Nywha, where I live. Prairie dogs are keystone species, meaning that many species depend on them, and their removal affects the entire ecosystem. I urge you, as an ecologist and as a bird watcher, to not allow rampant destruction at Redtail Ridge to destroy habitat for eagles and other birds of prey. I know that bald eagles and prairie dogs don't pay taxes, but they should still be considered for the benefit of themselves and for the future. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, Elena.
Next up is Michelle.
Hi, my name is Michelle Christensen. I'm at 2209 Spinnaker Circle. I'm deeply worried about what we're doing to our ecosystem and the Sterns' eagles. They need the prairie dogs to survive, and we need nature to survive for our mental health. People don't like to go around walking around soccer fields to take a mental break. We all have stressful jobs, and it's nice to go out in nature and see things, see live things, not dead things, not malls, concrete. The council now has an opportunity to listen to all these voices and to take action to preserve the prairie colonies at Redtail Ridge and supporting habitat conservation. You can demonstrate that Lewisville does have the values to restore its natural heritage and is committed to responsible stewardship. I was active in the removal of the prairie dogs at Longmont, and I've seen many people say, you know, how they've become very acquainted with our nature and how they like to go for walks and go out and see things. I think that we moved to Colorado, not for malls and things like that. We moved here to be a part of nature, and I hope you really consider what you're doing before it's too late. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
That's it.
I saw a light go on for a second, then it went off. Do we have any other public comment? I really appreciate the comments that have been made, and I appreciate the civility, because I know people feel very strongly about all the things that have been, all the topics that people have raised tonight. And it is, I wish I, I hope you can thank your wife, Mayor Pro Tem, for a terrific statement that I think may be inspiring all of us tonight, just a little bit. All right.
I do have one more person online.
Ah, that was the one, yeah. Go ahead, please.
Diane Kristoff.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Diane Kristoff, and I live at 3867 Fletcher Street in Loveland. I'm Conservation Chair of Foothills Audubon Club and North Ornithological Study Group with members from Laramie-Weldon and Boulder County. We observe and record data on birds, and have worked with towns and cities in all those areas to preserve and protect the habitat for birds. Recently, we worked with Loveland's Open Lands and Trails Advisory Commission to move a proposed recreational trail so that it would be at least a quarter mile from a gold eagle nest, which is CPW's recommended buffer. The project required open communication between both groups to be successful. The city even stopped building the trail for two years to allow for lengthy negotiations with landowners. This is why Foothills Audubon Club was disappointed when we received no acknowledgement or reply to our October 25th email to this council. There also has been a lack of meaningful response to efforts by Front Range Nesting Bald Eagle Studies, of which I am also a member, except for the petition signed by over 500 people. The Sterns' bald eagles- The Stearns bald eagle pair had garnered a lot of followers at their previous nest at Carolyn Holmberg Preserve, but because of a trail that was too close to their nest, the eagles left that nest and have come to the area in Louisville that was or is going to be ceded by Red Tail Ridge developers. If this land is developed, the Stearns bald eagle pair will have to move yet again, and the city will have lost a symbol of America that many people have come to love. I am hoping that before this meeting ends, Lewis City Council can decide to respond to the request made by many people that the land ceded by Red Tail Ridge can be protected and preserved so the Stearns bald eagle pair, along with their main prey of prairie dogs, can nest and survive there. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. All right. Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, just a point of clarification. If you are new to coming to council meetings, the reason that we're not, we don't respond to the broom ball comments or the eagles' comments during this meeting because they're not on the agenda, so people weren't able to be notified that we'd be having this conversation. So I've been on your side where you're like, why aren't they saying, what, are you going to say anything? And we literally can't get in that conversation. So just so you understand the reason for the silence, it's not, it doesn't mean anything other than following our rules with, only talking about posted agenda items.
Good. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. All opposed? Next part of the meeting is devoted to council informational comments and committee reports. Do council members have any informational items or committee reports they would like to give? Okay, not tonight. Right, the city manager's report.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to regular business. First item is a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, and our newest council member requested to read this, and I'm glad to do it. So Josh, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Whereas observed during the month of November, Native American Heritage Month celebrates the people, cultures, achievements, contributions, and sacrifices of Indigenous Americans. And whereas, the observance began in 1976 as Native American Awareness Week, which was expanded in 1990 by President George H.W. Bush to a month-long celebration. And whereas, for centuries, this land was home to the Ute, Arapaho, and Cheyenne peoples, and we acknowledge that Louisville has benefited from the forced removal and violence done to these peoples. And whereas, we recognize the continued importance of Indigenous people as stewards of the land, as well as their contributions to science, the arts, public service, and more. And whereas, we value inclusivity, racial equality, and our shared responsibility to honor Native American history, traditions, and cultural, and recognize the forced loss of their lands and identities. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Louisville does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Make a motion?
Motion. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. We're on to item B, which is ordinance number 1888, series 2024, an ordinance mending the Louisville Municipal Code to add a new chapter 3.25 regarding enhanced assistance for targeting, targeted business. First reading, and so public hearing for December 3, 2024. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item C is resolution number 58, series 2024, a resolution approving the planned unit development to allow construction of a 32,367-square-foot small storage building located at 745 South Pierce Avenue. And can we have a staff presentation, please? And while, while you're getting set up there, is it going to be a, an applicant presentation as well?
Yes, the applicant's presentation, yes.
We'll take that afterward.
Good evening, Mayor. Councillors, welcome. Councillor Cooperman. Matt Poe, Senior Planner on the Community Development Team. Tonight, we'll be presenting an application for consideration of a small storage facility, otherwise known as a self-storage facility, at 745 South Pierce Avenue in the area known as Colorado Technology at the Colorado Technological Center. This is resolution 58, series 2024. And my, I'm not sick. My voice is gone because I was at the CU Buffaloes game, so I, I'm not wearing a mask, that's why. So, it's a quick note. Quick background of the property here, the subject property is approximately 2.16 acres in size and is currently vacant. You can see the aerial on the screen. As mentioned, the property is located in the CTC and is in the Industrial Zone District. South Pierce Avenue bounds the property on the east. Existing commercial and industrial developments are on the north and south sides, and the BNSF Railway is on the west side of this property. This property was subdivided via the Colorado Technological Center filing number one plat in 1979. Moving to the proposal, the image on the screen is the proposed site plan. You can see that the building is roughly central to the site but favors the north side of the site. That is to accommodate a shared access point on the south side with the property to the south. We'll talk about that a bit further. The proposal includes a 32,367-square-foot small storage facility. And again, that would be a self-storage facility defined as small storage in our ordinance with associated site improvements. To improve with the detention and water quality pond on the east side of the site between the building and South Pierce Avenue. That includes native seed, a native seed detention mix, and there is a pedestrian path included that connects to public improvements on South Pierce Avenue. The building includes a prominent main entrance on the southeast corner. We'll see elevations later in the slide that provides customer access to an onsite leasing office, and there is a second recessed entrance you can see on the site here, central to the building. That includes a loading entrance for customers that's behind a locked fence for those that are leasing space to access. The applicant is proposing 11 parking spaces in the front of the building with another three loading spaces at the service entrance to the south. And again, those are located behind that secured fence. Part of the applicant's proposal this evening will be a request for a parking reduction on this particular site under the Industrial Development Design Standards and Guidelines, the IDDSG. I'll refer to it through this presentation. This site and use would be required to provide a minimum of 32 parking spaces. So again, the applicant is requesting 11 parking spaces and a parking reduction is, accompanied by a parking reduction. Again, we'll discuss that in further slides. Electric vehicle parking is proposed in accordance with our adopted EVCS policy. Then there is the shared access drive on the south side. Again, that is a bit unique, but it is encouraged by our Industrial Development Design Standards and Guidelines. We actually don't see it very often because there's not a lot of opportunity for it. There's not a lot of opportunity for property owners to work together to actually establish a shared access point, so it reduces curb cuts in the vehicle right-of-way and then reduces opportunity for conflict and allows for additional landscaping and further sidewalks. So again, supported by the Industrial Development Design Standards. The slide presented here includes the proposed east and south elevations of the building. The east elevation being that primary facade that would face Pierce Avenue. The south elevation would be generally visible from Dillon Road. Again, this is one property north of Dillon Road. The proposed architecture includes masonry stucco and then architecturally appropriate metal with a variety of massing, articulation, textures, colors, and heights. You can see that displayed in the parapet walls, and then there is articulation in the building facade as well. That corner entrance provides a prominent defining architectural feature, which includes a three-story wraparound storefront. Again, we'll see additional elevations, but you can see that displayed in this elevation. Then the applicant provided additional architectural metal trellises on that primary facade just for additional visual interest and then variation in the facade as well. Rendering provided by the applicant, which again highlights that prominent corner with that three-story wrapped storefront. Landscape plan meets and exceeds our minimum requirements, although there is a waiver requested for the 10-foot buffer that is required per the Industrial Development Design Standards between similar uses in adjacent districts. We'll discuss that further. Low-water plantings and drought-tolerant plants are proposed, and again, including native seed mixes on the west side. The majority of the site contains rock mulch outside of those native plantings and trees. We'll jump into the waiver requests here. So the first waiver request is for relief from section 5.2 of the Industrial Design Guidelines. Again, that particular section actually requires a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer between properties within the same zone district in our industrial district. Specifically requires one tree for every 30 linear feet of property line, shared property line. In this particular case, that would apply to at least half of the property. You can see on the, on the, on the site plan that's presented on the screen here, there's actually a storm drain on the north side property boundary where that buffer would typically be required. So the applicant is requesting relief from the tree requirement in the buffer area, and they've actually proposed the amount of trees that would be required there on the west side of the site. So we're not missing any trees here. They've just been moved to the west side of the site. I think it's also worth mentioning that, you know, typically you would see a landscape buffer applied to buffer between incompatible uses. We have two of the same uses here in the same zone district, industrial and industrial. So there's actually 64 shrubs included on the north side of the site. But again, this actually allows those trees to probably have a better survivability rate as well on the west side of the site that we're going, they're going to be unimpeded. So again, the applicant has provided those trees on site. Staff support the waiver request as proposed. Waiver request number two is requests for a waiver from our sign code or the sign ordinance. Interestingly enough, our sign code actually requires any relief or request for a waiver to be processed through the final PUD application process, so that's why this would be on this particular application. Our code allows for a maximum of two wall signs in an industrial district, one on a primary frontage and one on a secondary street frontage. And so the site has one primary frontage, and as such is only eligible for one wall sign on that primary frontage. The applicant is proposing one additional wall sign for a total of two wall signs, and that additional wall sign would be on the west elevations. That would actually be directly adjacent to the BNSF Railway property there and then visible to eastbound Dillon Road traffic. The, the sign is within size thresholds for permitted secondary signs. This sign is not permitted to be lighted. Lighted signs are not permitted in the industrial zone district. But again, staff find this request to be reasonable and consistent with the intent and limitations presented in the sign code. So again, this would be on the west side, visible to eastbound Dillon Road traffic. Into the parking reduction request, so pursuant to section 1720 of the Louisville Municipal Code, the City Council may increase or decrease the number of required parking spaces in consideration of a number of factors, including the parking needs of non-dwelling users. And again, based on the parking standards in the industrial guidelines, 32 spaces would be required here. And the applicant has presented evidence and asserts that based on the nature of the use, self-storage facility, the number of anticipated employees, site design, and the site design which utilizes that recessed customer loading area, a reduced parking allowance would adequately serve the guests and employees and wouldn't result in a negative impact on surrounding businesses or the adjacent street. Important to note that the CTC Owners Association actually prohibits parking in the right-of-way anyway, although it probably occurs there, but it is technically prohibited via the Owners Association covenant agreement. The applicant provided a memo highlighting the parking reduction request, and it includes examples of similar facilities in the metro area that are, that are parked with similar counts and ratios that function appropriately. And so again, based on the nature of the use as a self-storage facility, the number of employees that would be there, and the reduction in impervious surface that would come with the reduction in parking, staff find the request to be reasonable. With that, that, again, we found it to be, staff found the, the application to be in compliance with the municipal code with the waivers that were presented. And the application is also in compliance with, again, those industrial development standards and guidelines, which is that primary policy document we use for reviews against industrial properties. And with that, staff recommend approval of resolution 58, series 2024, to approve a planned unit development for a small storage facility at 745 South Pierce Avenue on the condition that the applicant establish and record a shared access easement with the property to the south prior to building permit application. The applicant is currently working on that. I recently received a letter from the property owner to the south indicating that he was amenable to the shared access point, and so will work to get that access point, or rather, an access easement that would go over both properties recorded to ensure perpetual access through changes in ownership on those two particular sites. The Planning Commission recommended approval with that same condition on June 13. And so with that happening, answer any questions? And the applicant does have a presentation.
Any questions of staff? Yes.
Thank you. I read in the packet that there is a very small portion of turf planned somewhere, and I was wondering if you could point that out on the, the map of the, of the property?
Just closed my presentation. Apologize. Can we open it back up here? I normally do not do that. Let's see, if we can find it, I might ask for the applicant's assistance here if we have. Do we know where the, where the turf is proposed? It's okay, councillor, I can probably take a closer look and then...
Yeah, we could, I mean, it could wait until after their presentation, too.
Yeah, I can do that. Yes.
Yes. Councillor Murphy.
You have a question. First, do we know how many employees will be there at any given time taking up the parking spaces? And are the parking spaces aligned with access into the building for loading and unloading things from the storage units?
I'll let the applicant answer the employee questions. I believe it would be one to two at any given time staffing their leasing office. There are those three parking spaces on the south side of the site within the recessed loading area. That would be the location where folks could stop, unload, or load items that they're storing.
Okay. You.
Other questions? Yep, go ahead.
Another question, which is partially from my own edification, but I think there were, like, there was an old maybe rendering in the packet which showed a road all the way around the property. But in any case, so the road goes to the west side, as I understand, requested by the Fire Protection District. And I'm just kind of curious, you know, sort of what are the regulations or whatever around the access that the fire department needs in terms of having a road on three sides but not the fourth? Just kind of curious around.
Yeah, so generally, I can say that generally the fire department would require full 360-degree access if aerial apparatus access is required. That would be dependent on the overall height of the building. But even in most circumstances, they could achieve aerial apparatus access on just one side of the building. So as far as the, the, all the way around, I don't know that I'm, I'd have to look at the, at the packet to, to, to give you more detail on that. However, the fire department did, again, review this and approve it for access. So, yeah, I think, you know, they would generally require a hammerhead turnaround. I think the shared access point that's presented here is, is functioning to suffice for fire access as well.
To the best of your knowledge, are there any other buildings within CTC along the railroad there on that side that have signs facing west? Whether or not it's, it's a primary or secondary road, I don't care. Are there any that are facing west?
I don't, I don't believe so, no. If you look at the two buildings that are south and north, I think they were developed in the 80s and 90s. But I don't believe that there are signs there. Anything north of that, I think, is obstructed by additional development that's on the west side. So I don't know that there would be many opportunities for advertisement or signage beyond the first three or four properties on Pierce, but I don't believe there are any other signs.
Okay, that's a great point. And there's also a whole development that, I think it's called Boulder Tech. They're all facing west, and they'll all have signs facing west as well eventually, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
The Boulder Innovation Campus.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Why don't we take an applicant presentation? If we've got one?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fernandez. I am an architect with DCB Construction. I'm also here with my associate, Mark Delgado, and ownership, Dom Kickbush. Adding to Mr. Post's presentation, our landscape plan includes or exceeds our green space requirement by over 25%, and it allows an improvement to the area. Wanted to just address that we are providing compliance with zoning and design standards. We've worked with the Colorado Tech Center Owner Association and received our initial planning commission approval on June 13th, 2024. As Mr. Post mentioned, there is a shared access point on the south side of the site, and it will be maintained via private ingress egress easement. There's been acceptance and agreement with our southern neighbor, Mr. Mark Williams, and we're in the development of finalizing the agreement and will provide this agreement prior to permit submittal. In response to the access lane, the area provides a hammerhead turnaround area, and we've worked with the Louisville Fire Department to meet with requirements and apparatus turnaround. So in case of an emergency, they will be, they will have the opportunity to reach all aspects of the building in sight and provide emergency relief. As Mr. Post mentioned, we are providing 11 parking spaces and three loading spaces. This is in alignment with storage facilities in the metro area and with two other facilities that Mr. Kickbush owns and operates and provides adequate parking for usage on a daily basis. Just making some key points here on the elevations. We've worked with the planning department to provide variety in materials and aesthetic variation on the elevations. The south elevation includes that corner element for the office, some drive-ups, and then the additional parking area for loading. And then the north elevation has our metal trellises, which provided additional material shadow points and variation to provide more aesthetically pleasing elevation. The east and west elevation showcase the signage, and with our request for additional signage, this is to help identify the building and usage from Dillon Road, which we believe will help support and attract individuals to the site. This is the view from the access point, looking kind of at the corner of Pierce and is the main entry. An additional rendering from Pierce Street, or I'm sorry, from the west, showing that second signage, and then potential view from Dillon Road. We also created this exhibit to show the visible or non-visible rooftop units, both from pedestrian and vehicular views. The rooftop units will be hidden behind the parapets and are not visible from either the road in vehicle or on foot. And then I think that's kind of the basis of our presentation. Are there any additional questions?
Councilmembers have any questions? Yes.
Thank you very much. In the packet, there were some pictures of similar sort of storage buildings in other locations nearby, and some of them have those, sorry, some of them have those large glass windows like you have at the main entrance of the southeast. And I was curious about light leakage through those windows at nighttime. Like, would it be typical for there to be interior lights illuminated at nighttime that would leak out those windows? It seemed like in some of the pictures that would be the case.
I think due to the lighting required, interior illumination of signage.
We don't regulate it?
No, we don't regulate it. Just kind of curious about if that's expected to occur or not.
I think the lighting would, lights would be on during our working hours. So maybe in the winter, the lights would be on, but I think just for energy savings or whatnot, they wouldn't be on past closing time of the facility.
Okay.
Councilmember Hallington?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand. So the signage component of it, what I'm seeing here is the Dillon storage, like the white sign would be what's used in both proposed locations, both the waiver and the one that's already granted according to code, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, one more question. The, the, sorry, regarding the number of parking spots. In our code, the ADA requirements and the charging requirements, are they tied to the overall number of parking spots or to something else?
ADA standards are tied to the overall number of parking spaces that are provided on site. Same with EV charging spaces as well, the overall number of spaces that actually exist on the site, not what the code would technically require.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? No. I'll take it back to council comments. I was gonna, first of all, ask if anybody had any concerns regarding the, excuse me, the regular PUD elements that the staff has outlined as being fulfilled by this project? If anybody had any question on that, we can go to the, if they don't, then we can go to the waivers. Any, okay. Let's, then let's talk about the waivers, because there are the two, one with, and I'm sorry. Okay. Landscape buffer, I mean, from my perspective, the landscape buffer and the sign code waivers both make eminent sense based on the way that the property is configured and the use for which it's destined. So, but others may have different views, yeah.
Thank you. Actually, just regarding the waivers, I'm in favor of granting them. I actually appreciate the attention to not, or to requesting only the needed parking spaces instead of putting even more concrete and less building space. I appreciate that. And thank you also for planting the trees in an appropriate location instead of just asking us to omit them. All of us will breathe a breath of fresh air because of you, so thank you for that. So that's why I'm in favor of saying yes to, to the project and to giving them the additional signage that they need. I think it's actually a consumer benefit to be able to see this appropriately and know how to get to it. So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just throw in my agreement. I think the waivers are modest and reasonable, and it's, I'm pleased to see another lot in CTC get built out, and self-storage is a good amenity for lots of folks, including people who are transitioning into or out of or back to the community and need a place to keep stuff in the interim. And I, for one, will be happy to see it go up, so looking forward to it.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Hallington?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am in agreement with the waivers. I feel like the landscape buffer and the transition of those plantings to another area makes sense, given the limitations on the property. The parking waiver also, to me, makes sense, and I trust that you make decisions that suit your business well and you will not underpark your business. So based on similar storage facilities, this seems reasonable. The signage, you know, at first I was a little bit concerned about signage facing west, but the signage you're proposing is, in my opinion, not intrusive. It seems to blend well with the architecture of the building, and we already have, just to the west of you all, a whole row of commercial buildings that will also have signs facing west, so it's not something that'll stand out dramatically to our residents within Louisville. So I'm in favor of the three waivers as well.
All right. Any other, yes? Councilmember Cooperman?
I agree with my fellow counselors about the parking and the sign, and also concerning the landscaping. Just wanted to make a comment or two about the landscaping. As Planner Post pointed out, and I was going to as well, I mean, I think having the trees on the west side is actually better, right? I mean, with a three-story building, they're going to see a lot of shade if they were on the north and would probably not do very well. And being on the west, they can help to shade that fire access road to prevent some heating from sunlight on it. I would like to swing back to the little bit of turf, just because I wasn't clear like why the turf was being included. If we could get that clarified, that'd be great.
Yeah, I was able to take a look at that. So I think that's, there's probably a little bit of confusion on my part, actually, in writing the staff report. So if you take a closer look at the detention pond on the north-hand side, or the north side, rather, they've actually provided a concrete maintenance path to access that pond. And the key and the legend on the landscape plan, the legend shows bluegrass sod, and the actual material of the legend is, corresponds with the concrete, which is actually a minor mistake on the PUD that we can, that we can correct. So there actually is no turf there. It's a concrete pad, so there's no turf. I apologize. That was an oversight in the staff report. Relatively small area, I believe it was only 100 square feet or so, or something like that, so.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number 58, series 2024, a resolution approving a planned unit development to allow construction of a 32,367-square-foot small storage building located at 745 South Pierce Avenue. Second?
I guess I want to maybe make a friendly amendment. I think we need that to make sure the condition, that we approve with the condition that the applicant shall establish and record a shared access easement with the property to the south concurrent with the proposed shared access point prior to the building permit application. Record of the recorded easement should be provided to the city.
Yes, I'll accept that.
First, I think we need a second.
Second?
All right.
I accept the resolution, the amendment to the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as amended, let's take a roll call. Actually, we just need a voice vote, right? Do we need a roll call? Voice vote, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. Next is resolution number 59, series 2024, resolution approving downtown vision plan for streetscapes and public places. Can we ask?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to pinch-hit for Cameron Folks, our city engineer. He's sick today, so fortunately you get me. Tonight's a fun topic, no soul-crushing transportation analysis. We're going to talk about the downtown vision plan, so I want to keep this topic fun and exciting because that's what this project is. MIG, both Matt and Jonathan are here. They've been our consultants for the last year, have been present in all our public open houses and city council and LRC-type meetings. And they're going to go into some details of the vision plan, but I wanted to just, a few high-level things to set the stage. What you're going to see tonight is just a compilation of ideas that have been turned into concepts, and we need to get things to concepts so we could create pictures for people to comment on. And then from those pictures, we develop high-level cost estimates, plus or minus 50%. So if we start worrying about $100,000 here or there tonight, it's not going to get us anywhere because we're not detailed enough yet. Adopting the plan is going to allow us to get an RFP out, and an RFP is going to allow us to come to you with a design firm, maybe MIG, maybe somebody else, that'll allow us to get into these details that a lot of people have concerns about. No final decisions have been made on anything. We just have broad topics across downtown with a system or feedback loop of priorities we've heard from the LRC and the general public. So the Steinbach stage is not set in stone where it goes or which way it's turned, and we shouldn't spend any time on that tonight, because we will have time through workshops in various aspects to have these conversations, additional public input. Also, we are aware, you should be aware, if you're not, this is a really complex project. It's got to take place over many years, not impact many businesses, and not impact many activities that take place through the year. So we're aware of that. We will come together with some sort of solution on how we engage the downtown businesses and all our partners that are running activities, but tonight, we don't need to solve that problem. As far as budget goes, you're going to see a lot of numbers in the presentation, phase one, phase two, phase three, 10 million, 15 million, 20 million. Our current budget has $9 million approved. We're going to work within that $9 million. That doesn't mean you're going to construct $9 million worth of infrastructure, because some of the $9 million will be soft costs for design and construction management, probably working with about $7 million of construction. So just checking my notes to make sure I didn't... So, just checking my notes, make sure I didn't miss anything. We will be coming back to you on January 21st, if all goes well, with an award for the R F P to jump into the gory details and continue the process. But for tonight, let's have fun with the vision. Hopefully through some of your feedback, we can adopt it tonight. If you're just really feeling not right about what the vision is and what these guys have to present, we can take some feedback and tweak that and then come back to you again. We think we've got a good product and we recommend approval tonight. So, with that, I'm going to introduce M I G and let them take over.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt, and thank you all for having us again here tonight. My name is Matt Schalke. I'm the Director of Urban Design at M I G here in Denver and we're excited to be a part. I was going to say, Kurt, we did add a soul-crushing transportation analysis to this, so just be ready for that. Let's see here. There we go. So, yeah, so we'll run through these slides. I don't know if the best procedure is ask a question or comment whenever, or we could hold it to the end, whatever you all prefer. So, we're going to run through this. As Kurt said, it's been a bit over a year of this process. It's been great. We've been excited to work, obviously in a community that's incredibly and dear to us. Sort of, it's always a great opportunity to work in your, while I don't, while I'm in Denver, I still consider Lewisville my community, broader community, and Main Street is such an amazing part of all of the sort of front range community. So, what we're going to talk about tonight are the public space improvements and what's talked about in the master plan, wayfinding and transit and mobility and how all those come together to, to sort of create a new vision or an expanded vision for downtown. As I said, this started about a year ago. We've gone through a pretty comprehensive public outreach process with stakeholders and the community, starting in November of last year with the Turkey Trot and, and stakeholder walks and, you know, we were onsite, sort of popped up at the, at the skate rink, through open houses in February and again in May, and then the last L R C meeting in September and, and including also presentations to the community throughout that entire process. When we did the stakeholder walk last fall, we also did with the people that went on that, what we call an urban quality assessment. It sort of asked us, as we walked through downtown in, in sort of three groups, to assess the existing quality of the urban fabric on this sort of, the four, the group of dots there, the almost like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. How do you make sure, how do you make a great public space and make sure people will come and inhabit it? First thing you need is, it needs to feel safe, you're protected from harm. If you're not protected from harm, probably not going to hang out there. Second, comfort. Is it too hot, too cold? Can you hear each other talk? Is it windy? How do we make sure the human comfort side of it? And then the sort of enjoyment and detail and other things. And so, people evaluated all these locations in downtown. The pink ones are good. So, you can see a concentration of, of good areas sort of basically in the core of downtown and more challenges a little bit to the south. What did we learn from all of that process? We learned that the sidewalks, as you all know, are narrow and they limit opportunities for public life and activation, hence patio spaces on Main Street when it closes and that take that parking. We need, we learned people want to see year-round activation, which you, you have in many places, but the, the temporary street closures don't solve all of the challenges. We also learned that downtown Lewisville is busy. There's a lot going on, especially in the summer with the events over on, on Front Street and all of the things that happen on Main Street and expanding the patio space and everything there. It's a vibrant and wonderful downtown. There's limited wayfinding, we'll talk about that. Obviously, as you well know, the railroad tracks on the east side limit the connectivity of downtown to everything happening to the east. And also last, there's a need for human comfort related to number one there, the narrow sidewalks. There's not a lot of street trees in downtown. I remember coming here last summer right when we got the R F P for this, we immediately went up there, let's go look, and it was on August weekend and it was 95 degrees and me and my kid in stroller, my wife, were the only people on Main Street because it was hot. And we can make, we can make it more comfortable and more of a year-round place to be. Through this whole process, you know, we established a vision that the heart of Lewisville is downtown, is more than just a destination, it's that dynamic and welcoming expression of the community spirit. I won't read the whole, all of it, but really three strategies emerged, emerged, emerged through this process. Link, amplify and navigate. So, link, how do I get into and out of downtown? Primarily multimodal connections, not cars, but bikes and pedestrian connections. Amplify, how do we amplify all of the wonderful things that are happening in downtown with this vision? And then navigate, how do I know how to get around downtown, get to parking, get to, to what is nearby? So, we'll start, start with link and I won't go through all of these, but most of these, these lines are all sort of bike connections primarily, many of which are in the transportation master plan from 2019. We did have on our team Fair and Pierce as a mobility consultant. They've been doing that transportation master plan, so that was a good partnership. One of the key things in here, in addition to all of the bike lanes, is discussion about the bus route. That was a critical challenge. Obviously, it traditionally runs down Main Street. When Main Street closes, it goes down Lafarge and there are impacts to that, to the neighbors. The second one, like we said, amplify, and we'll talk mostly about this in the upcoming slides, but how do we amplify all of the activity and things that are happening downtown? Improvements to Steinbach Plaza and Front Street to make it a better venue for all of the events and things that happen on Friday night and Saturday morning. Streetscape improvements to Main Street and to the connections on Spruce and Walnut. We'll talk about what those are as well. And then lastly, navigate. We're not proposing a bunch of flags everywhere. This is just sort of signage to help people navigate through downtown. And one thing we heard is also find the parking that is there. As part of that, we had Art House on our team as well. They are signage and wayfinding experts and they worked through a quick sort of concept for a downtown signage family of the different types of signs that would be needed to help communicate, how to get to places and a whole bunch of other things that could be on there as well. So, with all of that, let's look at sort of how that adds up to a vision plan for downtown Lewisville. I can see here in, you know, rendering or an illustration of the future vision for downtown and we'll go through each element here. You see the curbless street on Front Street, Steinbach Plaza, sort of activation renovation, activation of the alleyways, and then of course, improvements to Walnut, Spruce, Pine and Main Street. All told, just some data because we like data, not traffic soul-crushing data, but just a little data about trees. 78 new street trees, 49,000, you know, almost basically a little more than an acre of new amenity and gathering space in downtown. Six raised crosswalks or improved pedestrian intersection, almost two miles of new advisory bike lane and significant amount of new signage. I'll skip past this one quickly, we can come back to it. Parking, we know that was a key issue. We heard it from the community throughout the process. Parking is not impacted by this plan. There's 188 existing on street, on-street parking spaces and this does not include, that's reduced when alley, when the parklets are in use on Main Street. That goes down to 154. In the plan, we see 181 spaces and part of the way that is achieved, there's still parking along Front Street, angled parking, still parking along Spruce, Pine, Walnut and Main and it's covered up a little bit by the graphic, but the existing, sort of continuing the plan or the existing condition along South Street with some angled parking just to the west of Main Street. That adds up, that's included in that count. So, we want to talk about three sort of what we call transformative projects, really the linchpins of this, the Steinbach Plaza, Front Street and Main Street improvements in a little bit more detail. The first one is the Steinbach Plaza with the pavilion there and the ice rink and all of the things that occur in there throughout the year. It's really a, a hub and a great, you know, source of activity for all of downtown, we think, and the community really expressed this. It was a, honestly a surprise, right? To come into a project with some assumptions. We thought we were going to talk a lot about Main Street and that would be the focus of it. And right when we got into the community, it, it changed, which is great. We learned from the community and the Steinbach Pavilion became a key focus or the, and really the idea that that could be improved into a, a new community gathering place. So, like Kurt said, the Steinbach's moved, but that can come, all of that detail can be discussed in the future phases of design. I think what's really critical are the key elements and kind of program of it. The flexible lawn, there's enough plaza space to still have the ice rink, which is outlined in the, the pink there, possibly a splash pad to make it a year-round great summer destination, adult and children's play grove. And this is sort of retaining the parking that's there, but converting it into a bit of a grove so that when you have events, those could nestle under the trees, but you still keep the parking. During the process, there was a second alternative that's in the master plan that doesn't have the parking in there, expand some of these things. That's a future conversation as well. And obviously, this is what it is now. This, you know, could be what it becomes in the future with the play features under the trees for kids, the lawn, the splash pads and obviously a either relocated or approved Steinbach Pavilion as the hub of all of those community events. Really connected to it and kind of part of that idea, the second transformative project is making Front Street for that block curbless so that it really is an extension of the plaza that people can drive through when it's open. But when the festivals and markets and those things happen there, it's really seamless and allows the plaza experience to grow. Also, on every day, even when cars are there, it really slows down cars and says, this is a place for people. You are allowed invited as a car, but it's not about you. And what we've shown in here conceptually is between that second row of trees, you could still have angled parking on one side of it. So, the parking remains, but that becomes a perfect spot for Farmer's Market and stalls during different fairs and events. So, that sort of doubles, actually increases the capacity of space for, for events and works seamlessly with the, the plaza next to it. That could look like, something like that. And then lastly, transformative project number three, which is of course Main Street. It's still an important part of the conversation, important part of downtown. What this is showing, as you can see in the existing Main Street section, the two lanes, the on-street parking, the on-street parking on the right-hand side there that is often or in the summers used for the parklets. And this is showing, I'll just quick, a, the longer-term vision. We'll talk about phase one and vision here. The longer-term vision potentially, there was discussion of, does that become curbless so it's more flexible and adaptable? And what is a parking space can become a amenity space or a restaurant space very quickly because you don't have to negotiate the curb. But that's a long-term vision. I think this better represents a near-term idea, which is there's the existing conditions again, and basically streetscape improvements, so not making it curbless, but also, you know, essentially expanding bulbouts. So, taking away a little bit of the parking to create a wider sidewalk, space for trees, space for restaurant seating and other things. And then you can see the, the curb bulbs back and you've got on-street parking beyond and also then raising up potentially the intersection so that there's no ramps, the cars come up and slow down and the people stay level, really, you know, prioritizing the pedestrian in those spaces. And you can see the amount of trees and the amount of space and how that really changes the nature and the human comfort of Main Street. There is a quick look at phasing here. The first, you know, first phase, year or three years in here, starts with the Steinbach and Front Street and streetscape improvements to Main Street, moving later on to streetscape improvements through Spruce and Walnut and then longer-term vision, if the community wants to do it, sees the benefits by, of seeing the transition on Front Street, a discussion about does Main Street in the long-term become a curbless environment as well, really allowing that adaptability. Like Kurt said, lots of numbers. So, I think you've been through it, but you can see all of the items on, in pink and sort of our first phase add up to, or potentially add up to 14.25 and then, you know, the numbers be on there. But as Kurt said, those, which really, when you move to the design phase, what is the budget designed to that budget and, and select the projects in the sort of first phase that fit the priorities of the town. And I think that is it. So, with that, can I take questions?
Councilmembers' questions? Yes, Councilmember After.
Can you talk to us a little bit about, in sort of in coming up with the plan, how did you strike the balance between prioritizing cars and, and the other priorities in, in the plan around pedestrians and events and so on? And were there other alternatives considered that would have struck the balance differently and, you know, so on?
Yeah, I think that balance was struck, you know, primarily starting with the public engagement and what we heard at those initial, you know, initial events before we drew anything or did anything, the, the Turkey Trot event, the Ice Rink event, all the, all the events we came to in the fall of last year were just, we basically had a board that said, hey, we're working with the city to look at downtown and what improvements can be made. What do you think? And we heard a really very clear priority from everybody in the town that, that we spoke to, that it's about making spaces for people and, and that became the priority. So, that balance, you know, sort of, that, that informed that balance. Now, it's like, that doesn't mean and we don't intend to be sort of overly restrictive of cars. In fact, if you look at the mobility, you know, in the lanes and everything else in downtown now, we haven't removed a single lane of vehicular access or traffic and we've got the same amount of parking. Some of it has shifted around and the organization and the character of the streets have changed to, to make them a little more pedestrian oriented, pedestrian first, right? And it's, you know, basically have the appearance and the character of this is a space for people, cars are invited, but it's, you know, looks like a plaza you can drive in rather than a street that you can cross. So, it's just a bit of a, a shift in the character and the experience of it. But all of the infrastructure, the lanes, the parking that was in downtown now is in this plan as well. So, the car is still, you know, a part of this. The bike connections were key. We heard, you know, a desire to build, to connect to downtown by, through, by bike. But if you look in depth, you'll see not a lot of sort of protected, separated bike lanes in downtown simply because we don't have the space. If you, if you allocated, you know, six-feet bike lane and a three-foot buffer, we would have to either eliminate parking or eliminate street trees. So, it became more of a, this is a slow, and this was the advice of our mobility consultant. It's a slow-speed, lower-volume street. It's perfectly safe to, to have the advisory bike lane there and share it in that way. Does that, does that help?
That does. I mean, I guess the concern I'm getting at is, and I'm trying to think of a good example, but I'm worried about sort of a, a solution that's a jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none kind of situation, right? Where we've tried to be everything to everybody. And I think actually a good, a good example in some ways is the 16th Street Mall in Denver. I don't know how familiar, familiar you are, but.
Painfully. I've worked on it for now seven and a half years.
Okay, so, well, and maybe your perception is different than mine, but the, the original concept, right, where they're going to have the two bus lanes and the center median and it was going to, it was going to be great for transit, but also great for pedestrians and also great for the businesses, never materialized, I think, in the way a lot of people thought it would. And, you know, at least from where I sit, I've heard a lot of criticism, well, the, the bus lanes really screwed that up by trying to have these buses running constantly through the same space that's meant to be a pedestrian space and all, and Denver's obviously in a lot of ways a very different situation. But, but that's, that's the concern I'm getting at is how do we know we've hit the right balance and we haven't sort of, I, I'm worried that we've inserted too much sort of car access to make the pedestrian features functional.
That's, so, since we're about the mall, I'll use that as an example because that median, you know, the original design with the sidewalk and then a lane and then the 20-foot median with the trees in it where people were supposed to be and then another bus lane and the sidewalk. The challenge, and especially as downtown grew and there were more buses and the buses became bigger, right? And they were more atrocious, people didn't use the median. And the sidewalk spaces on the edges were too narrow to be comfortable and provide sort of adequate public life. And the, the mall became basically a hallway instead of a place to be, right? And the new design has all of those same elements, but it just reorganizes. The, the transit lanes are moved to the center, you know, and then all of the spaces on the edge of, you know, are consolidated and bigger and more, more pedestrian space. What I'd, the reason I say that is I think the details and the design do matter. And I think we're doing some of the same, obviously I don't have a median here and we're not moving lanes around, but particular with the idea of the shared street on Front Street, which was really sort of the model and the discussion of that on Main Street long-term. The, how the materials, how the appearance of the space works, how, you know, removing the curb is really a critical element in that too. Paving across it like the mall does with, doesn't have to be granite, right? But a, a uniform carpet of pavers that's, that don't differentiate the lanes that say this is a plaza space, while you still have the lane there, it really says this is a place for people. And by removing the curb, it's adaptable. So, if in the future you find out, you know what? We don't want to keep traffic on Front Street anymore. We can take it out, right? It's, it's very easy to just say, now it's a plaza because it's designed essentially as a plaza with a few cues for cars and where to go when it's open to them. Part of the challenge we face in here, there's a lot of discussion. Part of the challenge we face in here, there's a lot of discussion, should we close sections of Main Street, right? And pedestrians do a bolder mall or something like that. We said one of the challenges, what we found, right, the railroad tracks on the east side are a challenge. The neighborhood connectivity is all to the west. So one of the challenges of downtown is if we close Main Street, right? And so think of that as a pedestrian space and you have an event on Front Street. All of downtown's pedestrians, we put an incredible amount of impact on the neighbors to the west. And that's just because of the lack of connectivity to the east and just sort of the scale and the urban fabric of downtown. So doing that, there's a lot of discussion about that. We felt with a shared street model, you can get all the benefits of that pedestrianization and have the adaptability to close it at times and open it at times and do that as you need over the long term without making that commitment sort of permanent and putting that impact on the neighbors. That was part of the thought.
That's really helpful. And I, just one more question. On the sort of sequencing of Main Street, do you see it as we're going to do the bumpouts and, you know, other sort of incremental improvements? And the curbless thing is sort of a maybe out in the future? Or is the curbless really part of the plan?
Certainly part of the vision, but it's a, it's a fairly large project. And, you know, we got a lot of feedback on that. And two things that came up during the process, which, like I said, for a surprise, the emphasis on the Steinbach and how much that is used and the potential to really improve that space and make not just a new streetscape in downtown and place for people, but actually a park and a plaza and a real hub of activity became a priority. So that's why that got elevated at the beginning and the accompanying Front Street with it. Because really, I see those two as one and the same, a similar project. But the need to improve human comfort and make Main Street a nicer place to be was sort of still top of mind. So that's why the bulbouts and the sort of interim solution there. And then the city, the community can look at it in the future and say, do we or do we not want to make a much larger substantial commitment to removing curbs and making Main Street a shared street down the line based on what they learned from Front Street? What's the thought?
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this and the presentation. It's really good. I am curious to know where the, like, you had some parking ideas to enhance the number of spaces, either to increase the number of spaces by doing some angled parking on South Street and then on Front. Did you also have ideas for us to do that in any of our other streets to kind of help ease? Because we do have a, and we hear this all the time, a pretty significant parking shortage. When we're really busy, I mean, you look at it us on a Monday at nine PM and you don't have to worry about it. But you come on a Saturday and people are walking eight blocks and parking in neighborhoods, so.
Well, yeah, the challenge when there's a farmer's market going on, right, is you're,
Yeah.
It's occupying the parking as well, so.
Right.
That's part, you know, part of that challenge. And then you've got more people coming to downtown because they want to come to the market. We sort of, our scope and we sort of stuck to downtown really pretty strictly in this. So we didn't, we didn't, you know, we looked a little bit at Main Street going north. Not so much from a parking perspective, but just from a connectivity perspective. But we did look at the streetscape and saw opportunities for park, you know, that also the curb-to-curb dimension is fairly wide. There are opportunities to streetscape improvements and other things in there. But you also pretty quickly get into a residential neighborhood. So we were trying to keep sort of the downtown parking impacts and things like angled parking, which sort of, you know, are different character, less of a residential character. Keep that limited to downtown and be respectful of how quickly we get into neighborhoods.
And you didn't think, like, there was no possibility to do that on, like, the connecting streets like Walnut and Spruce that are connecting Front and Pine to add a lot of additional parking through there? Or that piece of Front Street that's to the south of Pine where Lucky Pie?
Yeah, sort of, piece of Front Street, oh, yeah, sorry, over here. We didn't look in here. We did actually look, we sketched various times, different configurations for Spruce and Walnut. I'm trying to remember if we actually drew angled parking on there, on Spruce and Walnut at one point. I don't think we did. It's fairly narrow. I think to do that, what it would mean is sort of shifting the entire road over a bit. So one side gets fairly narrow so you can fit, you know, an angled parking space. Basically, it's twenty feet of your total right-of-way width, right? And curse and a blessing, I think mostly a blessing. The streets, the right-of-ways are narrow in downtown. That's part of the charm of the city, but it does mean it's harder to fit some of those things in.
Yeah, I think we did look at like one-way streets to squeeze in more parking a lot. We looked at a lot of different things. This is probably the first incremental sweet spot to make these types of improvements. And then you can like always build off that success, but this is a good starting point.
Awesome. And I had a question actually about the signage, the Wayfair signing. That's, it was actually one of the recommendations for the LRC, that that like definitely be something that came initially. And I see it's still in the short term, in the early process, but I'm curious to know why we wouldn't do that, like, as we're doing the improvements to the street and the front and the parking, to make sure that as we're in doing this, we're already notifying and engaging the community on where to use things, where to find things, even a year of waiting for, since it's in the budget. I was just curious to know if that's something that can move forward.
I think it went the wrong way, but I'll go to the budget. I know it is in the phase one budget and I would basically just say, I agree with you. As the first phase gets done, you know, that sign family, I think it makes a lot of sense to get that designed, even if you're not implementing all thirty signs immediately, right? Just a few key ones. That can be for, you know, compared to some of the costs for major infrastructure upgrades, that can be a cost-effective and really beneficial thing to do early.
One last question. The alley activation, that I think is awesome. I mean, right now, when you're like, especially like, let's say you're parking down on the south side by Sweet Cow and Lucky Pie and then you're walking through, like, up to some of the other businesses and you're like, you're on your way to tilt or what have you. Sometimes, depending on time of day, it's like not the most friendly experience. But I was curious to know what that enhanced experience looks like. And again, it seems like it's reasonably cost-effective, but it's pushed way down the line and in the timeframe to do something that seems inexpensive and really valuable.
We pushed it back, I think, for two rooms. It could look like honestly a lot of different things. But we didn't get, to be perfectly honest, into too much detail into finding that. We were focused a bit more on the actual, the streets first. And the reason for that is that's the face, you know, that's in our mind, the priority for where public life wants to be. I think we've done some activated alleys in Fort Collins and other towns, and it's a lot of fun and it can be great. But I think that comes, you know, there's a choice for how we spend limited resources and where we put our energy. Should we start with the alley or should we start with the street, right? And so that's a bit why we focused on the street. We think that should be the priority, but we do think that can offer the alley activation. It can really be another sort of really interesting layer to what downtown is. There's a lot to figure out in there, right? It still needs to probably be where the trash goes and other things. So we put it a little bit farther down the priority list, honestly, down the phasing. With that in mind, let's address the park, the sidewalks, the public realm, those elements of it first and then get into the alleys.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you. So we're talking a lot about parking for cars. And I'd like to understand how parking for bikes and strollers is part of this plan, especially because we're seeing an increase in the utilization of e-bikes in our community, which are bigger than usual bikes, right? And if we have sidewalks that are wider and conducive to more strollers and families transporting that way downtown, how is that part of this plan? Because sometimes you see bike racks pretty deep and about to fall over because there's so many bikes parked in front of Bittersweet, for example.
And then someone will chain their bike to the tree, right?
Yeah, exactly, or a fence, so. Just generally help me understand how that's part of the plan.
Yeah, I will say it's not, we didn't get to that level of detail so we could count the number of bikes. There are some good metrics from different groups, lead and others, to talk about how much you should have in downtown. Essentially, by expanding the amenity zone, that's typically where bike parking would go. When we say amenity zone, we think of, basically, there's the sidewalk, right? Which stays open and clear for people to walk and roll. And then there's a space as wide as we can get it between the sidewalk and the curb, where you've got public seating, restaurant seating, street trees, pedestrian lights, all of those things that bring amenities to the streetscape. And that's sort of happening in this zone. And that is typically where bike parking would go. And so I think in the next phase, a real assessment of how much is needed and more detailed analysis would be good. And then, like all things, you know, the, I think the mantra in streetscape design is, because the space is limited and then demands are many, everything is a trade-off. So we could fill it with bike parking, right? Which I think there's probably a demand to do that. And that would be a great, you know, that would be a great sign that people are biking downtown. But then we're also taking seating space or restaurant patio space or other things. So there, and that design process, there needs to be a little bit of a balancing of that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
This is fantastic. So much, so much fun to see all the different concepts and all the thought that's gone into it. And you guys do such a good job with the visualization of it as well. So really appreciate, you know, being able to kind of get some visions of it. And this one you have up right now, you know, getting, getting a sense of it. You know, my big thing, you know, not wanting to, also just want to understand the process, you know, as we move forward, because I don't want to get into the weeds today and talk about, you know, how many trees on that street or how, you know, it's like, no, we're talking about generally speaking, these are things we want to do, but at what point do we miss? And this may be a question for staff. At what point do we need to, you know, get into the details of, for instance, trees, right? So trees are absolutely lovely. They also, I can't see a single business down that street because all the trees are blocking every sign. I have no idea what's there. We're talking to businesses about how many trees, how tall the trees, what kind of trees. And like, you know, what point does that conversation come back? So Main Street's maybe a bad example because that's probably three, four, five, six years out. So, gosh, we won't be talking about trees for a long time. But when we talk about Steinbach and the parking and this flex of how much parking versus how much, how many trees or, you know, the ability to see a stage from, you know, sixty, seventy meters away versus the line of trees we just put in. So we've got this grand, brand-new stage and you can't see it because of all these awesome trees, right? So I see a lot of thought to, you know, not put the trees in the middle of where the ice rink would go, trees along the railroad. Just trying to understand, you know, how much and when should we be giving feedback about things like tree quantity or which curbs are curbless or how many bike racks we have? Like, because we don't want, that's not today. I get that it's not today, but I want to say yes today. What am I saying yes to actually? And when is our next opportunity for a deeper dive into what's really going in? So anyone can answer any of those questions? Sorry.
Yeah, I can take that. We envision there will be some sort of working group that has to be kind of flushed out. But sometime in Q1, probably February, early March, there'll be some sort of kickoff that says, here's our starting point. And then we'll kind of map out where we're going to go to. And there'll be hops, like, say right now we're at five percent. There'll be like a fifteen, thirty, sixty percent. So somewhere in the, from five to fifteen and fifteen to thirty, we'll have those conversations and start to confirm. And once we start getting to like fifteen to thirty, this should be flushed out and we're really starting to sprint towards construction. So I would say you'll see heavier involvement in Q1 with, next year, with a group of people that is yet to be determined, but will be a broad group of people.
I appreciate it. So for tonight, my only comments really are just, this is absolutely fantastic, very promising, so excited about these. And I do agree that this, I guess, the piece that's important to sort of confirm from my perspective is, I'm good with the phasing of Front Street first, the Steinbach Plaza, you know, sort of first, the signage concurrently really, you know, as it's happening in Main Street, you know, second or third basis, you know, like what they presented as far as phasing, I'm in support of. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be turning around saying, no, let's do Main Street first, let's do Steinbach second. You know, so I agree with what's been presented and I think we're heading in the right direction. If anybody else has any thoughts around that direction.
Other questions? We're not quite to, we'll take public comment and come back to the, we're just, we're just on questions. Yeah, yeah. I appreciate the enthusiasm of the Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes, I was wondering if Louisville does get a rail station, have you thought at all about how some of these plans might interact with that?
Actually, we did early on and, you know, Jonathan told me before I'm missing this. I believe it's a little bit north, obviously, but close to downtown. I think Front Street became a key part of that and, you know, the underpass is South Street. So we did, we did, you know, consider that and talk about it as we went through this, especially on the mobility. How do we make sure that we're still connecting people to that? But in terms of where the sort of primaries, basically where the Steinbach Plaza is, where Main Street is, where those are, it's really built off where the activity is now. And so that felt like the best, you know, that's the opportunity of there, where there is space to create, you know, a plaza. And obviously, you know, where it's occurring now. So we did talk about it, but I don't think you really see anything very concretely saying this is a connection to future transit, right?
I would just add to that, the current plans that we've been working on with RTD on Peak Rail Service still have the train station on South Street or just north of South Street. So right where the South Street underpass is on the east side of the tracks behind the apartments. That is the intended train station currently. And so there'd be, you know, this wouldn't impact that, the ability to put the train station there. And I think there was some consideration on all the connections. And if you look at all the plans that are happening along Forty-two and South Street, they're, they're all taking the train station into consideration.
Did you have another question? Okay. It is about eight oh seven and I think it's time to take a break and then we can come back and do a time check. And then we can take some public comment. So why don't, it's, let's see, why don't you, let's come back here and be ready to go at eight fifteen. Thanks. Thanks.
This will add to that. So let's get to the more interesting things. I'll put on a different hat. From a program and project management standpoint, so I'm an expert in program management and innovation for over 30 years. And you know, it's interesting to me here, you need a lot of stakeholder input as you move things forward. And having public works and community development, which are very commercially driven parts of our organization, at the helm, is not necessarily at the heart of the downtown vision plan. I would like to see Adam Blackmore have a larger role in this plan forward as head of Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, especially the parks and recreation, the streetscapes. I think we need to consider outside help for program management for this kind of massive program. I'm almost out of time, which is a shame. The wayfinding, I think, needs a lot of cultural input. It is pretty flat, and we need a lot of marketing programs and more economic vitality around downtown, which isn't all on the city. Some of that's on the businesses.
Cynthia, I apologize. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Next is Lexi Adler.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Yes, okay. I don't come to council meetings a lot. My name is Lexi Adler. I'm a Lewisville resident and also the chair of the Lewisville Revitalization Commission, as you all know. And I just wanted to say first that this has been a true labor of love since we've hired, first hired the consultants over a year ago. And I just want to first thank the consultant team and staff for your incredible work on this project. It's been, it's been quite a long process, and I'm excited that we are finally here and that council, you're reviewing this preliminary plan. And what else was I going to say? I was going to say that, as you know, we budgeted, have taken out a lot, a large bond for this to hopefully fund a good portion of Phase One, but our budget won't cover the entire amount of Phase One. So that is something to consider. And I think throughout this project, we were keeping the budget in mind. But we, I am excited to work with you all throughout the process and hope that we can continue to be engaging with you through the next steps as we create the plan and go through implementation. So I am excited to be a part of this and go Lewisville.
Thank you, Lexi. Do we have any other public comment? No. I want to start the discussion here with just some framework in mind. This is, I am both on council and on the Lewisville Revitalization Commission. This project came to us through the Revitalization Commission. The Revitalization Commission is, as Chairman, or Chair Adler just said, providing a lot of the funding for, for this. This is a very early-stage discussion, and it, which is somewhat different than the kinds of discussions that we have. I, Mayor Protem kind of touched on this, because it's sort of hard to know how deeply we're looking at this right now. What we're going to be doing, where we're headed is in approving, we're not approving, the plan for the LRC to take forward to the next, to the next step. As a, as a plan, it doesn't, you could tell from the comments or the answers to the questions, a lot of the detail is to come. We're really here to, to kind of look at it, at least from my perspective, in a kind of guardrail sort of way. Is this something that we generally speaking support and want to take further, want to take the steps that Director Kaur just described in his presentation, and, and move the project forward. There'll be plenty of time for engagement, but recognize that the, this is not a, a project which starts as a capital project in our capital budget. It's, it's a different animal. And it is very important how the look and feel and all of that, all of the components are going to fit together. And that's one of the reasons why there is councilperson on the LRC, to be able to tie that together. But we're really, at this stage, really bringing, or we're, we're being asked to approve a proposal that has been worked up, as Chair Adler had said, with lots of love. I will second that because I've been a part of that process for a long period of time. We've had great consulting help, thank you, and we've had great staff support. And so I want to start with, with it that way. We don't have to, we're not approving a PUD, we're not, we're not doing some of the kinds of things that we do in other land use decisions that we have. That's not what's at issue right now. So it's really focusing on whether this plan is, as it's been presented to us, with the input of people in the community. So far, we have had a public engagement on it, is something that folks are willing to support on council. Does that, and I hope that kind of frames it up a little bit, because it's, it's kind of a complicated beast, or it's not the kind of beast that we usually have here on the dais to, to look at. So with that, council, questions, comments? Yeah?
I would like to say first, thank you to staff and to the consultants. This is a very long process. I mean, I've been at LRC meetings, I've been at open, public forums for this project. And I think what it's really come down to is it's been kind of fine tuned in what we think will work. And starting with Front Street and the Pavilion, I think is the best place to start, because that'll give us an idea of, do curbless streets work? Do they actually provide the function that we think they're going to provide? We'll find out. And I think that's the way to go, is to just start and see how it goes, and we can always refine it as we go along. But I am 100% in favor of this project.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman?
I guess I have a further question, maybe looking ahead a little bit. So Director Kaur, you were talking about sort of bringing together a group of people to see the project going ahead. And I was wondering if you were thinking about some of the advisory boards, or representatives from the advisory board to that group of people? And also wondering if advisory boards had been consulted in any of the initial phases?
Yeah. So the, the working group can have whatever makeup we think will make it successful. Businesses, PPLAB, LRC, council, that can be determined by all of you in the community. So no preconceived notions here. We just know we need broad input, but input that can be agile and move quickly, because there's a desire to construct in the fall after the concert season. And so there's time to talk, and then there's also a time to, to get going. So we'll balance that with whatever that group looks like. We did not, previous to coming here, we did not go to specific advisory groups. We held public open houses. We did have LRC meetings, as they are the funding partner. So it was more truly an open community input. We did have a specific resident meeting and a specific business meeting. This project happened to birth at the same time as the Main Street closure ideas. And so they, the, the two things got intermingled, and we kind of had to unwind or untangle those things. But there was a lot of intense feedback around a lot of these things. So I think we got good community input to get where we're at, and I know we still have more to go.
Anyone else? Okay. Can we get a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution Number 59, Series 2024, Resolution approving the downtown vision plan for streetscapes and public places.
Any further comment? Yes?
Yeah, I just, and I don't want to belabor this, but I, I just want to remind everybody that we're just off the, the budget cycle, and we budgeted $9 million for this. We're adopting a, you know, a $14 million plan, plus or minus 50%. So it, it could be our budget is right, or it could be our budget is way short. And given the, you know, relatively near-term phasing of this, we, we should all be mindful that we may need to find, you know, five-plus million dollars somewhere, you know, relatively soon. But, but with that, I support the motion.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, and thanks. I can see a lot of my colleagues from the LRC are, are on Zoom tonight, and want to say thank you to everybody who had anything to do with this in the last year and a half, because it's been a big lift. So thanks. All right. One thing I didn't do before was to take a time check. I was planning to get through the end. Does anybody, we've got one more substantive, and then we've got a pretty short final item. Any, any objection to continuing to move forward? All right, let's do it. All right. Next is ordinance number 1886, Series 2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Lewisville Municipal Code to extend the deadline to file a building permit and expand the availability of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code as an alternative for rebuilding of structures. Second reading. I'm going to open the public hearing and start with a staff presentation.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, member of City Council, Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'm just going to do a quick introduction to this. The proposed ordinance would extend the deadline for original homeowners who lost their home in the Marshall Fire or who have damaged homes to opt out from the 2021 Energy Conservation Code and Appendix RC with their repairs or rebuilding of their home. It would extend it from the current deadline to apply for a building permit, which is December 31, 2025, to December 31, 2028. The original ordinance that was adopted in 2022 was in recognition of the cost to build to the IECC and Appendix RC, which is the Net Zero Appendix, and the significant underinsurance. So it was to provide financial relief for those who are rebuilding. So you do have to certify that you're underinsured and you're an original homeowner, and then you could qualify to build to the 2018 Energy Code instead of the 2021 with the Net Zero Appendix. Council recently extended the deadline for the use tax rebate. That's also applies to people rebuilding or repairing their homes as original homeowners. Following the Marshall Fire, they extended that deadline, December 31, 2028. During that hearing, council indicated they would like to consider extending this deadline as well to 2028. We estimate that there are 19 original homeowners that haven't started the rebuild process and who also don't have their homes for sale that this could apply to. There's probably a handful who have damaged homes as well that still have yet to make repairs that this could apply to also. So happy to answer any questions about extending the deadline.
Questions? Yep, Councilmember Cooperman?
Could you, could you remind me about how you chose the date for the extension of the use tax?
So the council, during the hearing, council suggested that it be extended to 2028, just to provide ample time. You know, the, we had the dates in there originally back in 2022. The, the purpose was to try to incentivize a quicker rebuild process. It also has some impact on staff. We're implementing four different building codes right now. So the date, the dates were, having an end date was important for those reasons. But why it was extended to 2028 was a council recommendation, I believe, to just provide ample time, with no question, that everybody would have time to take advantage of the opt-out.
Okay. And so then the date for this extension is just to be consistent, pretty much, with the?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions, Councilmember? You have another? Yeah. Go ahead. And, okay, I was wondering, so we recently passed the Home Hardening Code, and so people who were yet to rebuild, they would be subject to that code, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And one other question. Do you know offhand what incentives and rebates are still available? So for instance, are the Excel rebates still available to people if they're going to build to higher codes in the 2018? Or is there money from the Boulder Community Foundation still available?
So I think those deadlines have passed for the Excel rebates. So that, I think that happened this summer. So if you haven't initiated yet, those wouldn't be available.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, council? All right. Since this is an ordinance, there's going to be two rounds of public comment. So this is our first round of public comment.
We have Tanya Samaru.
Hi, Tanya Samaru, from Cornerstone. And I just want to add, I hope it's not controversial to extend this, but from the trenches of someone trying to get her 2021 Code House to perform properly, it's, it's been really hard for a lot of people who went this route. And, you know, my builder picked not a great HVAC team, and I finally have a team that's coming in next week to tear out all my line set and replace it. It was all placed with the wrong diameter, and hopefully my house will actually be energy efficient after this. We've been using more power parts this year than my old house before it burned. So I have all the right equipment. I'm a person who's not afraid to break into installation manuals and ask a lot of questions. And it's just, I've had five hours of, six hours of people crawling through my house, trying to figure out what's wrong with my heat pumps, which are the right Mitsubishi heat pumps. So I just wanted to say that I wish it was easier for people to do that. And there's a lot of people who are still trying to work it out. And some builders, for whatever reason I don't understand, won't even touch 2021 Code. And they advise their, their customers, their clients not to go that way. And people just don't have the, you know, they're beat down, and they just can't push through with their builders. So anyway, I hope you extend this, and I hope if some people need it, it's there for them. And thank you so much.
Thanks, Tanya. Do you have another public comment?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to correct something, if I may. I, I had stated that the Excel rebates expired summer of this year. I believe it's actually summer of next year is when you have to apply by, is what I'm finding online.
Thanks for the clarification. That's good. First round of council comments. Yes, Mayor Protem?
I'll just say simply, I think this is, this makes a lot of sense. You know, I hope, I hope these 19 families, or maybe a handful more, do end up rebuilding. And I, and I expect that they, they should have the same opportunity as others, even if they're delayed. And, and I, I think, I do appreciate kind of pointing out that maybe we're losing the incentive, right? When there's a deadline, it's, well, we better do this by, you know, December 31, 2025. And it gets people moving, because if they don't, then they lose something. But I think this is the right trade-off. I think if we lose any sort of urgency because of this, that's a reasonable trade-off for me, because I think the moment of urgency is, is probably gone. That, that's not what's holding people back, is like that, you know, should I, should not. So, you know, I think if a couple of years from now, a kid of, well, I don't know if that works, but, you know, a child of a, of a parent that lost their house wants to actually take this on, and we've extended the deadline, and that family can maintain that, I think it's great. So I'm totally in support of the extension.
Any other comments? Okay. Take a second round of public comment. Is there any other public comment? Nope. So we'll take it back to council discussion. Any, yeah, okay. Councilmember Cooperman?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, sort of echoing one thing that Council Dickinson said. I am going to support this absolutely. I think, just a way to rephrase it, is that, you know, it would be inequitable, essentially, to not extend this for those remaining families. So that's all.
Good point. I agree with that. I think that's, that's kind of why we're, why we're here.
Can I just make a motion?
You can make, let me close the public here.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass Ordinance Number 1886, Series 2024.
Okay. Second. Let's take a roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Okay. Passes. Thank you. And thank you, Director, for working on this. Next item is Discussion Direction and Action on Committee Recommendations of Applicants to Appoint or Interview for Boards and Commission Vacancies. And we'll start with a staff presentation.
Happy to make a presentation, or I can just turn it over to your committee? I don't know what you prefer.
You want to?
Sure. So as a reminder, Councilmember Fahy and I read through the, just amazing quantity of applications. We had, you know, pretty much, almost for every single board and commission, we had enough applicants, and certainly enough qualified applicants to fill all of our vacancies. There might be one exception that we'll be looking to fill somehow. But anyways, what we presented, what we tried to do for the rest of council was, in most cases, to take, say, 14 applicants for four positions, and whittle that down a little bit to say, maybe seven to, for us to select for those four. And sometimes even going further is to say, we think these two should be appointed, and we think these four should be interviewed for the final two positions, right? So we did some recommending just straight-up appointment without interview, and then recommending a, a slate of applicants for interview for the final spot. So in some of these, like Board of Adjustment, there were four vacancies and four applicants, and we did look over their applications. And we think they're all qualified and, and good. And so it's a pretty straightforward four-for-four. And so there were a couple of examples of, of that. We're happy to talk through any of these. But again, to be clear, like Board of Adjustment is appointing with no interviews. Billing Code Board of Appeals is appointing with no interviews. A Historic Preservation Commission, I believe, is also appointing with no interviews. And the only reason for all, all three of those is just what we felt were either smaller pools or really clearly strong applicants, including people returning to their boards. The Historic Museum Advisory Board, we have suggested to, one reapplication, and what we thought was a clear frontrunner of all of the applicants. Sorry, the Historic Museum Advisory Board, I was looking back between Historic Preservation. I believe with the museum, we don't have any interviews of that either. Okay. And then Library Board of Trustees is the first example where we are recommending the reappointment of, of Heather Wigan, but also interviewing Ally Allen and Lynn for one remaining spot. So that's three interviews for one spot. On the Cultural Advisory Board, we're not placing anyone, but instead recommending six interviews for three spots. We have two people reapplying, but, but we're, the applicant pool was so strong, and there were so many people interested, that we thought it best to interview six for, for three. Open Space Advisory Board, we're suggesting the reappointment of Susan Meacham, McEacham, and, and the appointment, new appointment of Benjamin, who, again, was just, we thought, above and beyond all the other applications. But then suggesting four interviews of more candidates for, how many, I believe it's two more spots? Four for two. So just trying to finish up here. PPLAB recommending Todd with no interviews. And then the Rec Advisory Board, I don't, that doesn't look, my memory doesn't, I don't remember the reappointment of three people. Can you help me there? On Rec Advisory Board, I just, this might be misprinted from my memory.
That's, that's a typo. It's the, sorry. It's interviews of five people for two spots.
Yeah. So I think the, sorry, the Rec Advisory Board, Douglas, Lisa, and Michelle are, are on it.
Correct. I think that's a holdover from last year.
Sorry. So they're on it. You can strike that from, those three are just on. So we're interviewing all five, Joyce, Daniel, Julian, Gene, and Everett, or Eugene and Everett. Five interviews for three. Eugene is reapplying and has great feedback from the chair. But again, we, we are recommending interviewing five for three. And then finally, Sustainability Advisory Board, this is maybe where we did the least amount of work for you. We took it from about 14 down to seven for, I believe, only two spots.
It's now three.
It's now three? Thank you. Oh, that guy.
Yeah.
That guy. So Josh used to serve on that board. So we now have three vacancies. And I, I remember, I thank you for that reminder, because we were trying to decide six for two, and we're like, oh, it could be three. So we decided we'd interview seven for two or three positions, and it turns out it'll be three positions. So that's the only one where we didn't just simply name, name anyone. But yeah, so that's just kind of an overview. We tried to, like I said, just repeat, mostly get you down from like 12, 13, 14 applicants to two, three, four, five, six applicants that we felt rose to the top. So a lot of responsibility on Deb and myself, with help from staff, to, to, to make the list smaller. And that's hard for some of the people. And I just want to, anyone who's tuning in, great applicants who didn't make the sort of semifinals, if you will, of this process. But we just had so many good applicants, and we feel like these are the ones that we should be spending a little more time interviewing and/or placing. So with all that said, this is a lovely time to disagree with us and interview more people or to add someone to a list that we didn't. There's really not a lot of harm in adding one more interview if, if you feel like we left someone off that should be on, or striking the suggested appointment and, and sort of dropping them down into an interview position instead. So any feedback there? And then the only other thing I just noticed is we have suggested the appointment of Jim Branham to Board of Adjustment and the local licensing authority. And we have not checked with him to see if he actually wants to do two boards. Really what happened was, we, we selected him as a great member of the licensing authority, and I think just didn't catch, because it was four-for-four on Board of Adjustment. They're like, They're like, oh, great, these four are great, and we didn't, I just didn't put those two together. And then when I saw the packet, I'm like, oh, we have him on twice, is he okay with that? So, there could be potentially something to do there if he doesn't want one of these appointments, that we're looking at maybe now a vacancy we need to fill. So, that'd be the only other thing to consider as we move forward.
Deb, do you have anything to add to that? Okay. Just, just to be clear, we're not approving anybody tonight. I think Mayor Protem referred to that in the beginning. But just to be clear, we're, they did an absolutely terrific job. My understanding is this is the most applicants we've had for boards and commissions ever, which is just, just like our community, to be very engaged. And I can't say enough about that. And I really appreciate your saying that, the, the fact that not everybody could be chosen to even get interviewed or whatever is, it's just because we have a embarrassment of riches, as they say. But, as he puts it, there's definitely room to say, gee, somebody should be on, somebody should, you know, we should interview more people or whatnot. Why don't we take public comment? I think there's one comment in the queue, if I see correctly on Zoom.
Cynthia Corn.
Hello, council. Thank you. Uh, I think, you know, we, unfortunately for the open house and other things, we didn't have participation from PPLAB, and we're short one. So, I would just encourage everyone to, when you're interviewing people, especially from the buildings areas, possibly open space, but also REC, to ask the questions about would they consider a role on PPLAB. We are looking at Enclave and Sunflower implementation next year. We will have Median Designs next year. So, our projects tend to be fairly construction-oriented and operational. We're also looking at wayfinding signage collaboration with cultural arts. So, thank you. Really appreciate your support of everything we do. It was a heavy lift this year with the tax passing and with our review of designs for Enclave and Sunflower, which will actually be in ninety percent approval in January or February. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia, and thanks for the reminder about that. We can, we can certainly ask those questions. Okay, so back to council. Thoughts, questions? Yes, Councilmember Hefner first.
Yeah, thanks. First, thank you for the, to the two of you for doing this. Having done it last year, I know how much work and effort it is, but also how rewarding it is to, to read all of the great applications. And, you know, I think I echo the sentiment that it's terrific and a blessing to live in a, in a community where so many people want to participate in, in government. And I think of the training that we had last night and, and some of the definitions we talked about, about people having a voice and an opportunity to be involved and, and that sort of thing. And it, it's too bad we don't have more openings and can't appoint everyone to everything. But great to see the outpouring of community support. So, I, I for one am happy to go along with the expert recommendation of my colleagues.
Councilmember. It's all right.
There's one other thing that I just realized I didn't give, information-wise, then in case anyone wants to comment on. It was just the last one, and I sort of accidentally skipped it. We had four applications for the Revitalization Commission, and we are suggesting the reappointment of Corey Williams without any interviews. And one of the reasons there is, one, she's an excellent member, but also very likely to be the next chair. So, it was just, it was one of those that, this would, I think normally, this is important enough, especially with everything going on, that we would recommend interviewing all four. But I felt really strongly within the LRC community that this is a critical person to carry forward in the next year. So, that's why, just so you understand why we are recommending her for reappointment and no interviews. That's, that's the why there. Sorry.
Thanks. Now, Councilmember Cooper, did you have questions? Or a comment?
I could start with one question. So, I think there were two applications for PPLAB, and one of them being Rob Carpenter, I think. And I was curious around, I thought he had a pretty good application for PPLAB. I was wondering why you suggested the, the licensing as opposed to PPLAB when we could use someone on PPLAB? And there was another applicant, I think, for the local licensing.
I believe one, one of the, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember the exact, I know one conversation, piece of conversation we had was with all of the applications that we have, and interest in Sustainability Board, and all the other ones that we were pretty optimistic. Usually in years, like, we're like plucking people from all over the place to fill holes, and this feels like a, a board that we are very likely to find interest from people who are being interviewed, but maybe not selected for the Sustainability Advisor. We felt like this was very easy to fill, whereas the licensing authority isn't as easy to fill, and there were enough applicants, but we just, I, and I'm trying to remember if there's one other extending circumstance. There's no expertise, or it's not like the Board of Building Board, Building Code Board of Appeals. So, is that, was that basically the extent of it? I'm trying to.
I think that was the reason.
There's lots of conversations, but I'm.
Yeah.
I think also there was, there were three openings on the building, and only two applicants for those three spots. And he had suggested that he would be willing to serve on that board also.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a different one.
That's the, okay, sorry.
Like I said, there were a lot, but that, that was mostly my memory. It was, and, and with all due respect to Cynthia, that exact thing is, I, you know, I think we, we had an expectation that we would find some really good members to fill those spots, and that Rob was, was a very strong applicant for the licensing authority. So, that's, that's why we did that, but certainly could reconsider.
I could keep going. Sure. On the, for the Cultural Advisory Board, I guess I was a little bit curious why you didn't recommend anyone for an automatic appointment.
Yeah, I had not, I, I tried to have conversations with all the board chairs to get feedback on people who are reapplying. You know, we have attendance information, we have their application, that kind of thing. But nice to have a sense of, like, how well they participated, how engaged they were, you know. Anyways, just good feedback from the chair. I wasn't able to have that conversation. I have since had that conversation, and Mohammed and Roger are the two reapplying, have absolutely stellar reviews from their chair. I would be happy at this point to elevate them to reappointment and interview four-for-one, or leave it as it is. I mean, I, I, you know, I just, I didn't have enough information at the time to feel confident about just reappointing them, not for no reason, but there were just so many good applicants. But, but I will, I will admit that since my conversation with JR, they, they seem fantastic. So, those, that is certainly a possibility we could do that.
Yeah, I, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, I would say, on that. For, what else? Sorry. So, for Historic Preservation, I guess I was, I thought there were maybe two other candidates who seemed to have really pretty strong applications. And I was wondering, again, why, why you went with the, the automatic as opposed to interviewing a couple of other people?
Yeah, so, so this one was, again, we had a lot of conversations with a lot of boards. And this is one where, so one of the things we would do is, we would talk about anyone who was reapplying, and then we'd talk about the applicants. We kind of start with like, all right, do you have a clear number one? And she said Talbot, and I said Talbot. We're like, oh, like, clear, like, yeah, like, okay. Well, we, we, we just a hundred percent agreed on that. And so, that one felt easy for us. Where usually, you know, like, well, what are your top three? And then we'd have like maybe two of the same, and then one unique, and then we'd have a deeper conversation. This one just happened to be that we both really enjoyed Talbot's application and had him ranked as sort of above everyone else. And so, we, but, but very good opportunity to interview more people. It's actually so wonderful to have this many people applying for the Historic Preservation Commission. We've had a problem with that in the past. So, really wonderful. But he also is an Old Town resident, which we need, which helps a lot with his application, because there are certain qualifications needed for HPC. And a downtown, an old, Old Town, local resident is one of them. So, he fits that as well.
Ask about the, uh, the Open Space Advisory Board. So, I, I guess I'm wondering about your decisions for the automatic appointment for Benjamin Moe as opposed to some of the other candidates?
Yes, and this one, I believe, there are four vacancies, or three, four vacant, four vacancies. Thank you. So, the chair is reapplying. And so, we, we thought that was a good automatic. And then it was similar to the last one, is we went through and said like, who are your top four or top three? Like, if we were just to appoint those, and both of us were clear that Benjamin was our first choice. And then we had some discrepancies on two through five, let's say. And so, because, again, he was our first choice, we thought, a little less work for you guys. Felt really confident about Benjamin, and then, and then put four-for-two that we weren't in total agreement on.
Okay.
I wish I knew if it was Benjamin Moe or Benjamin Mao.
Not sure.
We were, we were struggling with that. We'll, we'll have to learn that name at some point.
And then, finally, for the Sustainability, I was, so you're, on the list, Geiger and McDermott and Reeves did not make the list? For interviews? And I, I don't know, I liked all of their applications as well as some of the others, but, or I actually liked some of those applications better than some of the ones you chose. So, I don't know if you'd want to add anyone to that list of interviews, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable. Again, in this case, God, I need someone to count real quick. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen applications for two spots. So, and, and the way the packet was presented, this one was the last one. And it is interesting, you get to like, everyone's answers are so good, and trying to discern, you know, one from the other, they, I found, I, I really did find it to be very difficult to pick between some of these people. Like, it was, it was very difficult. So, again, I think what we did was, I had my top five for two, and Deb had her top five for two. And we basically found a list of seven that were included in those ten recommendations. But I am absolutely, this is why we're doing this tonight, right? Is that if there's someone that you feel strongly about, just at least give them an interview. That's what we're here for, right? And I, I think, you know, not, not like it's one-for-one, but, you know, if we were to recommend automatic reappointment, if you will, for Roger and Mohammed, that's too few interviews, and we could maybe interview a couple more people for this board, which we know is an important board. It just means that we'll be interviewing nine people for two spots, and we'll, but, but that, very well, someone you recommend could be one of the two we end up picking, right? So, anyway, that's, that's what we're here for, so we can, you can recommend additions, if you like.
I guess, I can, well, I'd like to hear what other people have to say, but I, I am interested in possibly those three additions for the Sustainability interviews.
Geiger, Reeves, and who?
McDermott.
Yes.
So, I'm just going to say thanks. This, this was an unreal amount of work that the two of you did, and I greatly appreciate it. And honestly, I appreciate Josh's inquisitive nature and interest in interviewing everybody. That's always really fun. But I am going to implicitly trust the judgment of my colleagues and helping us kind of narrow the scope in the field a little bit. We will be limited on time, and I think to make it efficient and fair for everyone else as well, I think, and respectful of everyone's time, including ours, I think that this is a really great process of reading through the applications. I know last year, when Barbara and Dietrich did it, it was amazing, the ranking. And I think that Caleb and Deb have probably done something very similar, but, but didn't like provide us with that, like, lovely chart. I'll just throw that out there for you, Barbara. And, but, but I'm happy to follow the recommendations and trust the detail and, because they put a lot more time into this than the rest of us did, thankfully. Appreciatively.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for reviewing the applications, having done it last year. I understand it is, it's great to see how many people are interested in serving our community. It's also a heavy lift to go through all the applications. I, um, there's a lot of interviews to have. I completely agree on that. I have a different take on sustainability. I mean, you served on that board, and I think Josh has a unique perspective on what success looks like in that board and the qualifications that are needed on that board. So, I'd be willing to give up thirty more minutes of time to interview the three applicants that Councilmember Cooperman feels have particularly strong qualifications for that board, given his experience on that board.
If I may ask then, did, did you also feel that there were three other people then that were less qualified than the three that you're recommending we add to the interview list?
Yes, I, I think I could substitute if you wanted me to, or make suggestions.
Let me, let me make a suggestion in the interest of time and comity. Maybe we add the three, and then we can compare them to all of them. I, I, I agree that, I, I respect the, the fact that you've been on the Sustainability Committee before, and, you know, an extra, an extra half an hour of interviews, I think is probably erring in the right direction, if we're going to err. But let me see what, thumbs up, thumbs?
I was just going to say, I agree, but I'll give a thumbs up. I'm, I'm happy to add three more. I, I think we did that last year for a few folks as well.
And I, I really appreciate, I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a big, heavy lift to go through all of these. And I can't, I, I can't thank you guys enough for doing that. And I can't imagine how you can remember all of the people and how you went through them quite as well as you did, Mayor Protem. So, I got to tell you that you deserve an ovation for that. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, just one other side comment. Many of these are not filled, right? We don't actually know. But another thing that we did take a little time to just notice, I would say, is about as much as we did, was to notice Ward One versus Ward Two versus Ward Three and the current grouping. And like, are there zero, you know, people from Ward One? Well, let's at least have an applicant from Ward One, but not like, oh, well, we have to have a ward. Like, so I think it's okay if a board has no one from Ward Two on it. It's not the end of the world, but it's nice to have some diversity of area and location and things. And, and so, you can rest assured that we actually did look at that, and that there's pretty much, almost on every board, when possible, there's at least one person from every ward, either already on the board, or if not, then appointed newly and those kind of things. And then the second thing was, again, just a And then the second thing was, again, just a look, but really it didn't, it never came up as a qualifier, disqualifier, but there's a really great gender balance on most of the boards, certainly overall on all of our boards. We have a very good, you know, mix of, of, of gender on the board. And of course, I don't know ethnicity of really anyone, that's very, that's not, that was not a goal explicitly, but it seems to be a, a nice diverse board. And there were people that spoke to their own personal, you know, diversity, and it's one of the categories is, you know, adding something unique to the board, a new perspective to the board. And so that was something we did look at, and that could be all sorts of things. That could be age, or experience, or time in the city. Another thing that we didn't do that maybe was a, a bigger thing when I first got on Council, is there was no like, well, if you haven't been here for more than a year, you can not be on this board, or you need to have been here for five years in order to be on this board. There was no like tenure in our town in order to be qualified to be on a board. So those are just some other things that were kicked around, but it really, it didn't, no one has been placed because of any of those categories. We just kind of noticed that and were pretty happy with the balance that was on there, and didn't have to really push anything. So just, just so you know, those things were, were paid attention to.
Is it also true, just one last question, I should have asked this earlier, that just because somebody was reapplying for a new term didn't mean that they got automatically re-upped?
Correct. This, this was an interesting year in that almost none of the re-applicants had any serious attendance issues. One that did was actually, we can maybe edit it, I think one of their absences was for a religious holiday. And so it was like, oh, that, they only missed two, and one shouldn't really be an absence kind of thing. So we had really good attendance, we had really good participation, and really up and down the board, any, any chair I spoke to was like incredibly effusive about the people that were reapplying. It wasn't just like, yeah, no, they're good, they're fine. It was, oh my God, they are so important, they do such great work, they're so, it was just like, okay, I got to go. But, so that, that's another reason for it, is that they, they had really good support from, from their current boards.
Okay, good. I guess we have to close the public hearing. And I think the Council direction is clear that we're adding three, the three candidates.
The only question would be, do we want to recommend appointment without interviews for the two Culture Advisory Board members that are reapplying that got stellar reviews from their chair, or do we want to interview four? So right now, I think we're interviewing six for three, or we could interview four for one. Or we could appoint two, and then interview four for the last one. Thoughts?
Yeah. I, I, I think if I understood what you said earlier, these are folks you would have recommended for reappointment had you had full information. Now you do have full information, so if that's your recommendation, I, I would tend to support it. And it will help balance out the interview schedule.
Agreed.
I'd also say they're both new to the board. One has only been to three meetings, one only to eight, like they're, and they haven't missed a single meeting. So they're new people that are getting going. So that's another reason that I recommend reappointment. So with that, I think we might have clear direction.
Direction clear? All right. Good. City Attorney's Report.
I have no report, thank you.
Okay, the next is Identification of Future Agenda Items. I want to compliment, Councilmember Hefner had a good suggestion, which is that we ought to look carefully, all of us, at the advanced agenda before every meeting. And if there are things on there that you want to either move up or move off, or obviously, if there are things that you'd like to suggest, this is the time to do it. We usually get to this time, and everybody's tired, wants to go home. This is no different than any other time. But one thing that he suggested, and I think it's a good, I think it's a good suggestion, is try to get a little more clarity about when we, you know, somebody raises something and we actually, either we vote or we have, you know, a thumbs up, so that people know, yeah, we are going to put that on there, or no, we're not. And I think that it's, that's a, we've been maybe a little loosey-goosey about it. It's my, I'm running the meeting, so I've been loosey-goosey about it. But maybe get a little more clarity. Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly, so this is, you know, Identification of Future Agenda Items. I'm not ready to suggest that we add, you know, anything regarding the Sterns-Eagles to an agenda, but what I would like is potentially to get a staff update or clarification, like an official update and understanding of, like, again, it's, it's my understanding the Eagles have moved locations, but I don't know if that's public knowledge. My understanding is the Eagles are building a new nest in the Warrenburg Open Space, but I don't know if that's true or not. So like, I want to understand the, we had a lot of people come today about that topic, and I don't have all the information, I would like to say almost like unbiased information, staff information on the current whereabouts of the Eagles, their current nesting, their current hunting. I think there's some old information, or maybe not old information, and I feel like if I got that from staff, if I had a better understanding of, of how this all plays together, then I would have a better idea if I wanted to pursue this as a future agenda item, or if I was satisfied with, with the status quo of things, where things are. I don't feel like I have enough information, and I'm not asking for it to be on an agenda yet. So I don't quite know how to.
Ask staff to just provide a, the kind of information that you're talking about in an email.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
On that same topic, would it make sense to include any kind of legal information around, you know, federal protections for Eagles and the city's responsibility with regard to that?
We can do that. We can work together to send you something.
Yes, some, some information has been sent out to others, but not to you, because that was before you got on, so, but we can, yeah. That's great. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Do you want to make the motion to adjourn? Councilmember Cooperman?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All opposed?
Yeah. Are you going to stick around longer?
The eyes have it.